We on? Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this evening's regular meeting of the 15th of May. It's a pleasure to see everyone, and we'll welcome all the people who are watching perhaps on Zoom or who will see this later. So we'll ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Terry. Councilmember Gatewood.
Here.
Councilmember Pulipati.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sander.
Here.
Mayor Budge.
Here. Will you read all the legal language about how people can participate?
Yes. The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will replay on Thursday, May 18th at 9:00 a.m. and Sunday, May 21st at 9:00 a.m. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrocable14. A DVD copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department, and a webcast of this meeting will be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you, Stacey. As we usually do, we are going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll have an eminication by Tammy Hartman from the Sacramento Law Enforcement Chaplaincy, which we invite you to remain standing for. And I'm going to ask our colleague Ken Cooley if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So we'll rise. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ken. Tammy, welcome.
Thank you for having me. Join me in prayer. Blessed Father, we are honored to come before you and bring this meeting before you. We ask that the city councilman be blessed and the community be blessed by the workings for our community and representing the community. We ask that you use your creative inspirational touch on everyone involved in this meeting, and we work toward the best outcome for all involved. We ask that everyone leave in peace and feel your love and your presence during their time here. And thank you. Amen.
Thank you, Tammy. Everyone be seated, please. We have a couple of presentations tonight, and we're going to start with Brittany Mariscal. Who has someone to introduce?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. My name is Brittany Mariscal. I am the Code Enforcement Supervisor for Neighborhood Services, and I'm here tonight to introduce our newest Code Enforcement Officer, Josh Lee. He started with us as a volunteer back in June, volunteered, came into our office a couple days a week for a couple of hours to learn about code enforcement, helped our administrative staff, and then got hired in December as an admin through a temp agency. So he's been working with us for a couple of months. And then just last month, we hired him as a Code Enforcement Officer One, backfilled a vacant position. And Josh is very hardworking, he's a very fast learner, and a great addition to our team.
Wonderful. Welcome, Josh.
Good evening, all. Again, my name is Josh Lee. In my short time being here and through learning from my dad, who also is a Code Enforcement Officer, some of you may know him, just a lot of things, learning and being with the city, I've shortly came to love it here, love what I do, and I'm glad to be a part of the team.
Welcome. You're carrying on a tradition.
I am, yes.
Now, are you related to Junior?
I am, yep.
So you're the Junior Junior League?
I am the Junior Junior, yep. And also Jay Lee as well, so.
Marvelous.
Very good.
We're welcome.
So you know about the tradition, new employees coming before us, you get to sing the Welcome to Rancho Cordova song.
She did inform me of that. Why are you laughing?
Yeah.
That's part of the song, I thought.
That's right. Welcome aboard.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So it's my pleasure to invite Mikhail to come and join me at the front. This is Mikhail. Would you pronounce your last name, please?
Gotch.
Gotch. Great. He is with the Ukrainian Federal Credit Union. We actually have a branch of the Ukrainian Federal Credit Union over on, over by the post office. Yes, thank you so much. Over by the post office. So they are actually 20 years old in this country, and whereas, oh, in Sacramento, and whereas, you're right, and whereas Ukrainian Federal Credit Union was founded in September 1953 in Rochester, New York, and whereas for 70 years, the Ukrainian Credit Union has provided financial services to immigrant communities across the country, including in California, Massachusetts, New York, North Carolina, Ohio, Oregon, South Carolina, and Washington, and whereas, as of today, they have 13 branches nationwide and serve more than 26,000 members with assets over $378 million. And whereas, the Ukrainian Federal Credit Union was named a top workplace in the 2023 Rochester Top Workplaces Competition, and whereas, the first of the Ukrainian Federal Credit Union's, their Sacramento branch officially opened its doors in June 2003 in Citrus Heights. In November 2019, it opened two new branches, one in Citrus Heights and the one here in Rancho Cordova. Whereas, the Ukrainian Federal Credit Union Sacramento area pursues a mission to help members and the community achieve financial success by providing them with the highest level of personalized services in both Ukrainian and English languages. So therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Rancho Cordova does hereby recognize the Ukrainian Federal Credit Union Sacramento area for its 20th anniversary. And we wanted to honor you and give you this plaque in recognition and invite you to say a few words and tell us about the credit union.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mikhail.
I really appreciate and great thank you for Rancho Cordova community and for the honorable people of Rancho Cordova City that we are working for our Ukrainian and Slavic community, for American and Ukrainian people for over 20 years in Sacramento, great area, and three years ago, we located our new office in Rancho Cordova. Thank you very much. And this coming Friday, we are celebrating our 20 years anniversary of our services to our community, and we invite, extend our invitation to all honorable people of City of Rancho Cordova. Please, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Of course. Thank you for your time. My pleasure.
Thank you so much. As you know, this is your opportunity to discuss things that are not on the agenda tonight, and remember that we can't take action on things that are not on the agenda, but we will be happy to put you in touch with staff, appropriate staff, or schedule something on a future agenda if that's a need and would benefit from that. We would ask you to take three minutes and tell us what's on your mind, and everything that you want to talk about that's on the agenda, we will have an opportunity for public comment for those items later in the meeting. Stacey, do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
Yes, we do. So I will start with those who I have received speaker cards from in the council chambers, and then I will go to Zoom. So if you are in Zoom, please get ready to raise your hand. We'll start with Marilyn Metzger. Following Marilyn will be Eric Weiniger, James Garcia, Helen Wayland-Bashaw, Greg Mylenberg, and Jennifer Garcia.
Good evening.
Hello. We have to stop meeting like this. March 16th, 2020, the world shuts down. March 19th, 2020, the city council approves Bold Beauty in secret, setting a planning and approval precedence for all future projects, regardless that it was done by neglecting to provide the public notification of key information to homeowners about the meeting, vote, or project details. Disregarded the 2020 EIR that showed a higher and unhealthy level of air pollution, but chose to stand on the ever-defended but often amended developer agreement and the 1998 and 2002 EIR done on vacant land. Neglected to add a truck parking area to the project plan with 24 truck bays revealed a lack of understanding the facility's function. And then there's Elliot's game of what I call whack-a-mole by moving their land credits around to avoid providing land for the hawks. No evidence of required documents anywhere that fulfill these obligations, but all of Elliot's projects were approved without the necessary documentation of this mandatory requirement. Another perspective came from the Grapevine Independent article on Rio del Oro dated May 4th, 2017. This massive project was approved by the city, and it includes 269 acres of industrial zoning that is set aside for warehouses. Some may be adjacent to neighborhoods. Grading began, but Amazon decided to pull out. From the article, Cyrus Abhar, city manager, said planning for Rio del Oro was conceived before Rancho Cordova even became a city in 2003. Quote, "The city's job is to oversee the development process, so myself and my team were involved from the planning aspect to engineering to the financing of the project." Obviously, the, end quote. Obviously, the city offered major input and perspective on projects, but then claims they can't impact changes to protect the residents. Still from the article, Linda Budge then shares that communities and people change over the long period of time required to go to completion of a project like this. Quote, "So we have a thing called a development agreement, and it can be revised from time to time. You want to ensure that in your formal approvals, you've given everybody the ability to make a different decision if they need to in subsequent years. Everybody, but not the taxpaying residents and their families, need to? Only the developers and politicians get the privilege of making different decisions in order to reap higher financial benefit and have more influence. It is time to reexamine how the city conducts business. The lack of trust is growing, as with each meeting, it is evident that the city works for the pro-developer city attorney, his firm, and land developers, while the residents are the collateral damage in the quest for a building win. We are not the problem here. Dermody, Myers, Neve, Elliot are. If Dermody pulled out of Eldorado Hills...
Please wrap up your comments.
If Dermody pulled out of Eldorado Hills Project Frontier, they can pull out of here without a million-dollar lawsuit. A hundred...
Thank you, Marilyn. Next.
Next speaker is Eric Weiniger. Following Eric will be James Garcia.
Welcome, Eric.
Good evening, everyone. I have a general question about process. I've heard getting a mixed message from the city manager's office versus what I'm reading on the city code, municipal code, about design guideline application processing and appeals. So I'd just like to have clarification about what that process is through whatever means. I know you typically don't respond directly to questions during this venue, but I've been told that we heard that there is no appeal process for this, but I read the general code, and it talks about a whole process here, including a table that talks about the different types of applications that are in play and what the appeal process is. So my request is that some clarification be made about what that process is so that we can be sure that if and when appeals are presented, that they're done correctly.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
James?
Hello, city council members, and I am James Garcia from Stone Creek, and I'm here tonight to ask a few questions, how the city has handled development agreements during its nearly 20-year history. After taking the time to analyze the documents I received from public records requests, it appears that the city has not performed its due diligence with regards to the service of these development agreements. My reason behind such a statement is that from reviewing the 20 to 35 agreements I received, many had lacked doing the annual compliance review with developers. In fact, there were no responses from the developers for any other requested review letters that went out. Agreements from 2004 to 2006, first reviews were done in 2006, 2008, and 2010, then nothing until 2020. Agreements from 2013, once again, no reviews done until 2022. The actual agreements contain language about the annual review being done yearly and initiated by the planning director. Upon further review of the development agreements, some had effective dates prior to the adoption of the agreement. This is a legal contract, and as such, needs to be proofread for little details such as the enter date and the effective date. These were later corrected in an amendment eight and a half years later, and the first compliance review notice for such corrected agreements was done four months after those amendments. I want to know why the planning director has failed to initiate annual reviews each and every year to protect the interests of the city. If the city had a better way to manage documents for each development agreement to show all items related to the agreement and all project documents, then others would be able to see the progress of remaining compliant by the city or the developer. Why has the city's attorney not pressed for annual compliance reviews? After all, they too signed off on these legal documents. I would like to know who is to blame for not following the law? Is it the planning director, the city attorney, city manager, all three of them, or someone else? Give you other examples, since I have a minute, some of the actual language within it. The director shall initiate the annual review by giving the landowner written notice on or about June 15th, 2005, and each June 15th thereafter, that the city intends to undertake such review. Landowner shall provide evidence to the planning director within 30 days of the city's notice to demonstrate good faith compliance with the development agreement. The burden of proof by substantial evidence of compliance is upon the landowner. Another agreement has city's planning director shall initiate the annual review by giving to landowner written notice, written that the city intends to undertake such review. Within 30 days of the city's notice, landowner shall provide evidence to the planning director to demonstrate good faith compliance with the development agreement. The burden of proof by substantial evidence of compliance is upon the landowner. Once again, landowner is not to be in compliance with the agreement by virtue of such failure to timely initiated reviews. So again, I want to know who's to blame.
Thank you, James.
Madam American, ask a quick question?
Go ahead. Greetings, everyone.
Actually, hang on, I have a question. The last two speakers were speaking about 11.1.
No. That is general. That is everything else. That is Anatolia, nothing to do with anything that's on the agenda.
It sounds really specific to me.
I know, but I think Adam agrees, and that's why we didn't talk about it. Thank you. Next.
Hello, everybody. I'm Helen Wayland-Bashaw. I want to say first, I enjoyed last Monday's meeting to hear how everybody was pleading for their piece of measure R, and I like some of the decisions that you made with some of them that seemed to overlap. Good job. Now I'd like to tap on the back of what the prior people said. In most businesses, we hold people accountable, and I'm very surprised, we're coming into 20 years, and we're not in compliance with our own rules. So what are we going to do to address the poor performers that overlook the procedures that have been in writing of what you're to do? Additionally, there are federal, state, and local standards that apply to particular pieces of ground and particular acts. Why doesn't the people in the planning department look to see if the builder is submitting the least stringent procedure and you're signing off on stuff? Another issue is, it appears to me that the attorney is representing the builders and not the citizens to make a comment stating that they will back the builder and not the citizens. You're going to get sued either way. So somebody needs to pony up, get your man pants on, and say to us, we're going to honor you by following the rules, we're going to look at what we've done wrong, and we're going to rectify it. It doesn't mean selling your citizens down the river by allowing the builders to do what they want to do. You know, I'm just appalled. I see that the mill station, whatever you want to call that development, that's going in across from the light rail station, we seem to have a better communications at those meetings. There seems to be a lot of listening to the public and going forward with it. Another area is, a presentation was done on where we're going to be in 2045, 67% reduction in pollutants. My big drawback on that presentation is, great little chart, but it didn't tell you how we were going to get there. It didn't represent the number of vehicles that we have on the rolls right now, the increase in development in the community, the type of vehicles, and the fact that most vehicles are kept by the owners for 20 years. So to put a presentation forward, to want to go into something, you need to have hard facts that you're showing the people, not just a bunch of cute little charts that have a line showing we're going to hit a goal. That is poor management, and that's poor presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Next.
Greg Mylenberg?
Welcome, Greg.
Good evening. I'm Greg Mylenberg, Stone Creek resident. Dr. Sander, congratulations on your son's choice of college. He could have gone for free to the United States Military Academy. I'm up here for a short period of time that I wrote a note. I took my comments from last meeting on climate action, adaptative plan that was presented to the council, and I wanted to record that and send it into the city clerk so that you also can have a chance to read that. As a member of that committee when it started out, had good reasons, and it also still has good reasons in order to get money from the state of California for environmental grant funding. However, there are certain goals and objectives within that you should read and pay attention to. The baseline was started in 2019, and by 2030, we're going to be 50% to 90% going in inverse direction with the amount of truck traffic that's going to be coming into the area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg. Next.
Next, I'm going to Zoom, Jennifer Garcia. I see that your hand is raised, and I'm going to go ahead and unmute you, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Welcome, Jennifer.
Great, thank you. Thank you, councilmembers. Just wanted to ask a question. I did not see it on the agenda. Do we have an update on the city purchasing the land back from Elliot Homes and where that is at? And it's just a general question inquiry, if we are purchasing that land back and that has gone through, are we going to ask Elliot to move their general contractor off that land, or are they renting that back for a small fee?
Jennifer, the city manager, will put that in his city manager's report?
Oh, perfect. Thank you so much. That's all I have for general comments.
Next.
Those are all the hands that I see that are raised in Zoom, so I will read off the names of those that submitted general public comment. The city clerk's office received general public comment via email from the following individuals, Brenda Augustin, Valerie Knipschild, James Garcia, and Marilyn Metzger. These have been distributed to the city council, posted on our city's website, and they're printed in the back of the room in the public comment binder.
Wonderful. Thank you, Stacey. Okay, then we will go into council reports. Donald.
Oh, you're brief. Besides Little League games and other things like that, most of my other life has been work or family stuff. But I did attend a fairly impromptu town hall is the best way to describe it over at McGarvey Elementary. The school board member, Fercina, held, and I know some of us got invited to that, and fielded questions on various topics. So the easiest rundown, and I'll just share this, and I know we have a couple of parents that came here, and we suggested that they do that, and they decided to just invite everyone that lives near there to talk about a subject that, at best, is a very difficult And not to bore everybody with all of the state financial issues and things that are going on, but if you look at Elk Grove Unified in general, the last two elementary schools that they built, and basically, the way that we apply fees to developments anywhere in the city and really anywhere in the state, is about half of the impact fees come in to build a school. The other half come from state bond funds, which the state has not passed a state school bond in many years, so there's not money left for it. So Elk Grove Unified financed the last two schools that they built and are waiting for the state to pay them back for those. So McGarvey and Zender Elementary School. So in order to get to a high school or middle school, and you know, the school district has done a lot of work around engaging with an architect that is going to design something that could be built in phases so that we could have, start with a smaller school that then could be built, and maybe someday build a high school at a later date, but it would mean that we could get a high school, high school, middle school five-ish years early. But we still don't know when that actual date will be, because it's just five years earlier from, you know, who knows when. And with home sales declining again and not selling as fast, it's going to take longer. But the most important thing to remember is, without that other half of the money from the state, they can't build even the next elementary school, let alone the next high school, middle school, whatever. And so what I try to remind folks is, this is not a question of want, this is not a question of political will. There's nobody out there that's against building a high school or a middle school in the south area. It just comes down to, are there enough kids? And even if there were, are the finances available? And so the only guidance I would give folks is, convince your friends to move to this community, have more babies. That will get us closer, but ultimately, when the next state bond comes on the ballot, vote for it. Because if you don't, there's not going to be the other half of the money. And I don't think any of us are looking at changing impact fees in the city to cover 100% of the cost of every school that's built. The way the math has worked for the last 50 or 60 years in California is, about half of the impact fees come from the local community and impact fees on home sales, and the other half usually comes from state bond funds. The last governor wanted to get rid of that and not do that anymore and have local communities come up with all of the money, which hasn't happened yet either, but that's pretty much where we are when it comes to a high school, middle school in that neighborhood. And that's what I shared with folks last night, it's what I would have shared in private with those folks, and they could have shared it with their group of folks that are getting together. So that's really all this boils down to. We need more kids. Once we have enough kids, we could build the high school, but we still need the financing. And right now, there isn't financing at the state.
Thank you, Donald. Garrett?
I'll start out with Happy Mother's Day. Mom, I know you're watching, always watching. And then, at the same time, because it was Happy Mother's Day, my son was born, so happy birthday to Garrett Gatewood, Jr. He had a blast. Best Mother's Day gift and worst Mother's Day gift all at the same time. Here's the 10,000 things I did. I went in on a local advocacy panel for the SRA. Those are local realtors that sell Rancho homes to tell them about Rancho. Met, went to the county sheriff or police memorial. It was sad to see that we have actually two officers there, and got to talk to Mark Stasiak, who's one of the policemen that died protecting one of our citizens, and I was at that one. Met with Rich Desmond, who, if you got to know this, he's the county supervisor for some of Rancho Cordova, talked about what's going on in the city, had a boisterous meeting with the Stone Creek residents, talking about putting lipstick on stuff. We'll leave it there. Met with about the grants and how much money can go into nonprofit. So we got a bunch of money that we're now going to help nonprofits that were hurting due to COVID, so we're deciding how much money goes to each of those groups, and we're in a subcommittee for that. Met with the city about IT Uh, met with the city about IT contracts. Um, if you guys want to know about nerdy stuff, we had a big nerd out about a fiber city contract, which is very important. And then I was bringing up minutia, which I won't bore you guys with, and that is it. Thank you.
Thank you, Garrett. Siri.
Um, so as council member, um, Donald mentioned, that after the community town hall meeting we had in Elk Grove Two by Two, um, while it is right that, you know, we need more people, we do need that bond measure, but there are some things that we, as council members, can keep pushing, and I would keep pushing as having another, a high school, middle school as a top priority for our city that we do need. As you guys know, there's some things where we say our hands are tied, there's nothing we can do, but there's some things that we need to keep trying to see what we can do. They may be alternatives. We, maybe we have a redraw the district lines, maybe we have another school district, I don't know, but we have to keep trying on what we can do on having a school in that area. So we, I attended that Elk Grove Two by Two where we discussed some of these facts. Um, I also attended the CIEF Industry Design Build Competition. That's the Construction Industry Education Foundation, and we had a lot of high school students that showed out their beautiful work in design and construction, and our Cordova High School students did a great job. Um, there is a big gap in the construction industry, and, um, so we saw a lot of students building, and it was a great day to see that. Um, I also attended the Good Neighbor Day, which was on Star Wars Day, and I think it was a really good turnout, um, good food. If you guys see a Good Neighbor Day in your neighborhood, I would highly suggest you come out there and, you know, enjoy the free food, free activities that we do. We also talk about what's going on in the community, and you get to meet, you know, our police, our council, um, and a lot of our staff over there. Um, I think the next event comes up next week, and it's in the Sunridge area, I think, so look out for that. What else? Um, also, we had the Rancho Bot Challenge Competition Awards that was held here in the city hall. I mean, it was a huge turnout. We had a lot of elementary school kids and middle schoolers who were out here. This was one of, another event which is funded by our Community Enhancement Fund. You know, we had a lot of parents that did not have exposure to the field of STEM and robotics that were really happy to see our city play a part in it, so they never thought about even attending or future for their kids in the field of STEM, but they, because they thought it was, you know, kind of for, I don't know, out of reach, but when they saw how easy it was, you know, they were really motivated and they're really thankful to the city for having such programs. Thank, um, and also I was part of the subcommittee for the nonprofits, um, along with council member Garrett Gatewood. Thank you.
Thank you, Siri. David.
Yeah, very busy couple of weeks. I want to congratulate the Cordova Community Council on IFest, which happened this last Saturday. They had, uh, record turnout, record, uh, participation. We are just really pleased with how the community comes out to these events and enjoys each other. IFest, if you don't know, is International Festival, so you have a stage load of activities plus food and lots of vendors and music. It's a great, great community event, happens in the Capitol Village Park. Um, I am chairing regional sand this year, and so this Friday, we are going to, I guess it's cut the ribbon, but it seems like there ought to be a better thing to do if you're at regional sanitation that deals with sewage treatment. But I'll leave that to the more creatives. You may remember about 15 years ago, our region was required to make a $2 billion investment in our regional sanitation facilities to lower the amount of urea or nitrogen that was flowing into the American River. It was a huge debatable point at that time. Uh, the science was a little iffy, but the fact is, that was the state mandate, and that's what has happened. That project has ended this week. This is finally the end of that project. The project is called Echo Water, um, and it's a neat word, it's a neat project name because what's basically happening as a result of that is very, very, very clean water is now the product of the, uh, of the regional sanitation plant, water that's being used to irrigate a lot of farms in the southern part of the county. And as there's a whole Echo Water Distribution Facility and Plant, and are winning national awards because of it. Was it worth $2 billion? That might remain to be seen because we're all paying for that. That was not magic money from elsewhere. But in any case, we're cutting the ribbon, or whatever it might be, um, this Friday, so we can look forward to that.
Maybe they're turning a spigot?
Maybe, yeah, some giant valve. I mean, the facilities are enormous, so, yeah, ribbon doesn't quite seem to cut it. Uh, let's see, we've had community council board meetings, I've been present at CACOG Board Meetings, um, and Linda and I have been present Sacramento Placerville JPA Meetings. The Rancho Athletics Association had a meeting last week where we sort of got an update on how are all the youth sports doing two years after the pandemic? And the answer is, in Rancho Cordova, incredibly well, in small part because of, no small part, because of contributions from the city for Measure H, Measure R to some extent, allowing kids who could not afford to play, the ability to play. It used to be that all the leagues allowed that, but it wasn't well-known. Now we're advertising the fact that you do not have to have $195 to play Little League. The city will backfill Little League to make that all possible in the end. So we have record participation going on, which is what our goal was. So it's really, and we'll have a great report coming out about that later on, where we can see the growth in participation and in youth activities in Rancho Cordova. And I think I'll just cut my report right there. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, David. Um, so the routine part of my two weeks was Regional Transit, and as David said, the, what's called the SPTC JPA, that's this, it's the rail line from basically 65th Street all the way up to, um, up to the town of Placerville. And for most of that way, rails really do exist, even though they're not accessible by anybody in particular, but, um, um, they were team meetings only because this is budget season everywhere, so both Regional Transit and the JPA talked about budgets. The fun part, of course, these last two weeks was the International Festival. Dog and I walked up and we had a good time listening to the music and just hanging out and enjoying the day. Um, that was the first of my two-day Mother's Day celebration. We had celebration on Saturday with one side of the family and celebration on Sunday with the other side of the family, so we were busy this weekend. Um, the inspirational part of these two weeks has been the fact that, um, our Police Activities League and our CalCap, um, Film Studios have been working with a group of kids who have produced, they have written, directed, produced, and filmed, and starred in, um, public service announcements for different issues that are, that affect kids today. And, uh, and it was really very moving. There was an awful lot of, of talk about, a lot of PSAs about bullying, uh, even one from a, a young man whom I've actually known for quite some time because they used, they used to live down the street from us, um, was about suicide. And these are kids who are 10, 11, and 12, and you know, it's really a sad commentary that these are the things that are present in their minds. Inspirational part of this, um, couple of weeks has been cutting the ribbon on what's called the WH Williamson Park over on Coloma Road. The Williamson family owned a lot of acreage in that area, and, uh, the two little lots that have been on either side of Studeris, um, on the way into that neighborhood were donated to the park district several years ago, and so now the one on the west side is open. It's got pathways, it's got benches, it's got trees that are going to grow up, and, and they have, they both have a perfectly beautiful canopy of, of oak trees, uh, to build from, and then they, the Tree Foundation, we all got together, um, several weeks ago and with the Tree Foundation and planted more trees out there. So it's really going to become a lovely community asset for that neighborhood there. Um, and then our, our good friend, Keo Sato, turned 100, and we have, we went to her birthday party and just had the most delightful time. This is a lady who does not look a day over 90, she does not act a day over 90, and she and another little friend did a hula for all of us. Um, we should all want to do a hula when we are 100 years old. And then, um, I guess partly under the heading of, of sadness and partly under the heading of celebration, Rancho Cordova's dear friend, Cordova Joe, passed away. A lot of us know, he, he, bless his heart, it was in his 80s, not very old. Uh, a lot of us knew him because he was with, uh, Cordova High for years, which is how he's got the name, Cordova Joe. He was a veteran, he was a lifelong Steelers fan because he was from that part of the country, and, um, and then most recently, Joe worked at Safeway. And then one day, he wasn't there anymore, and, but you know, bless his heart, he would always walk you out to your car, um, very old-fashioned service, very gallant, old-fashioned service. And if, and you, if you said something to him like, Joe, you're working today, he'd say, no, I'm getting my exercise. That was his attitude toward working at that point in his life, and, um, we will all miss Joe dreadfully.
He was the most cheerful person I've ever met.
Yes, absolutely. Joe and his wife used to make blankets for people, and, um, and they made a blanket for a mother, and we buried her in it. Yeah, so, yeah, perfectly wonderful person, um, very much a treasure here in Rancho Cordova, and he, he is deeply missed, so.
He also inspired generations of Cordova High kids when he worked on that campus.
Yeah.
He was, uh, I wouldn't quite say mascot because he was sort of a, sort of a senior when he was there and everyone knew it, but he was beloved by those students, and he had words of wisdom for all of them. He had a big impact on a lot of kids.
Yeah. So we'll turn it over to the city manager.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Um, a couple of things to highlight, I, I get to go last, so I think most of you cover many of the different events. Uh, the community council did a great IFest, uh, the Rancho Bot, uh, did a little bit of the opening welcoming at the Rancho Bot, SuVita did a great job with that event. Uh, and then we also had a, a group at the Greater Sacramento Economic Council Event on last Thursday, uh, celebrating economic development, uh, projects throughout the region with, with all of our region partners, uh, also last Thursday. And I will want to highlight real quick the Good Neighbor Day, uh, that council member Pulapati talked about, that was at, uh, Peter J. Shields, was a great event with over 200 residents, and really just want to thank the community engagement team, um, who brings together all the other teams, Public Works, Neighborhood Services, Police Department, uh, for those events. And there is an event on Thursday of this week, uh, at Sunridge Park at 5:30, so if you, uh, missed out on May the 4th Be With You Event, uh, there is one this week on Thursday at Sunridge Park to, um, bring those different groups together and, and talk about, uh, what's going on at the city. Um, and then last, uh, just wanted to, uh, remind folks that on Wednesday of this week is the Mills Crossing Design Charette, uh, here in American River Room at 5:30, um, to talk, uh, more about the Mills Crossing, and I do appreciate the comments tonight who have enjoyed the process so far from some of our, um, some of our public members. Uh, and then, uh, just real briefly touch on the, the question that was talked about earlier in public comment, which was the status of the Elliott Properties Acquisition. Uh, we did, uh, this week, uh, or last week, remove the contingencies for that acquisition, uh, and will be closing by the end of this month, uh, on those properties, uh, moving forward. So, um, that will be a closed transaction by the end of this month.
Very good. Thank you, Micah. So we'll move into consent calendar items. Consent calendar items are deemed routine unless, um, a member of the council wants to pull an item, or, um, we have, uh, public comment, and, um, do we have anybody signed up for items 9.1 through 9.6?
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment for items on the consent calendar.
Okay. Um, does any of the council members have an item? If not, they can be approved with one motion.
Move the calendar.
Second.
Thank you. Call the roll, please, Stacy.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Yes.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Councilmember Pulapati?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sander?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Yes, thank you. We don't have any consent public hearing items, so we will move, consent public hearing items, so we will move into public hearing items, and Stacy will ask you to, uh, um, announce the subject of 11.1.
Logistics Center at Rancho Cordova, major design review, project number PLND-1021-0015.
I will turn it over, turn it over to staff.
Nick Sosa with the Planning Department. Uh, tonight's presentation is for the Logistics Center at Rancho Cordova. Um, let's go ahead and get started. The purpose of tonight's meeting is for staff to return with the resolution and documents for approval as directed at the April 17th, uh, city council meeting. Um, staff will also be discussing two modifications to the final project documents, one modification to the resolution and one modification to the conditions of approval. Then, uh, staff will be doing a brief summary of the project and it'll open it up for questions. Shown here is the first modification to the resolution. Uh, this modification is to Section 4 of the resolution, which is page 6 of 13. Um, the added language clarifies that the Villages of Zimfandel specific plan, uh, design guidelines are the applicable design guidelines for the project and not the designer view approval findings of the Rancho Cordova Municipal Code. Um, this is because the findings of the municipal code would, could have prevented, prevented development of the property, uh, as vested under the development agreement. Here is a modification to condition number 83. Uh, shown here is the modification of the conditions of approval regarding the Swainson's Hawk foraging habitat. Uh, this condition has been modified to specify more clearly the performance standard of 30, which is regarding Swainson's Hawk of the Villages of Zimfandel Special Planning Area. Um, required to, um, this performance standard is required to be met prior to improvement plan approval or building permit issuance, whichever comes first.
Thank you, Nick.
Mm-hmm.
Just for, just for clarity, um, could you go back one slide? So in other words, before a building permit can be issued, that has to be satisfied. That's how these conditions work when it says?
Correct.
Prior to building permit.
Before it's issued, yes.
Right. And each one of these conditions has a similar trigger like that?
Yes, mm-hmm.
In clusters, like before this, before building permit, before grading plans are approved, that kind of thing?
Yes, some are ongoing, some are part of approval of the improvement plans, and some are prior to issuance of building permits.
Okay, thank you.
Um, if you'd like, I can continue quickly through the project summary?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Okay. Um, so just to quickly reiterate the entitlement under review, uh, the applicant's requesting a major design review for the 155,040 square foot Shell Industrial Building. Uh, the property is zoned business professional, which allows for uses both under BP and MP use, use tables. Um, wholesaling and warehousing is listed as a permitted use under the MP table, and because the use is permitted by right, uh, council's discretion is limited to the designer of the building. The project site is located adjacent to the Matherfield Air Force Base and the California Military Headquarters along Bear Hollow Drive. Here is an image of the site plan, uh, with Bear Hollow Drive to the east and North Mather to the south. The project site has three points of access, one on North Mather and two on Bear Hollow. Uh, one of the access points is a truck access with a modified driveway to restrict truck movements from traveling north of the project site. The project also has a 12-foot screen wall that wraps around the northeast corner of the property to better screen the loading area. This is the most current landscape plan and provides an increased density along Bear Hollow and North Mather for additional screening. Over the course of the project, the applicant has increased the number of trees as well as the initial size of the trees to provide increased screening at installation. These are the same elevations that were presented at the April 17th meeting. Uh, the elevations include second-story glass windows, additional roof articulation, additional vertical siding added to the elevations, and additional- additional vertical siding added to the elevations, and additional blue accent color to each facade. The project has been reviewed and determined to be in conformity with the original EIR for the villages of Zimfandel Special Planning Area and is exempt from further SEQA pursuant to section 15183, project consistent with the community plan, the general plan or zoning. Staff recommend, staff's recommendation is that the project is determined exempt per section 15183 and to adopt the resolution for the Logistics Center at Rancho Cordova subject to the findings, project plans, and conditions of approval of the resolution. And staff and the applicant are available for questions.
We have a couple of pages attached to our report called additional conditions of approval. Did you want to discuss those now?
So these conditions of approval, the additional conditions of approval, are ones that were presented at the April 17th meeting. These additional conditions have been incorporated into the current conditions of approval that are attached to the council package.
And I thought so. I read all 95 conditions of approval, or however many there are.
Yeah, these slides were included just for reference, in case we needed to pull those up.
Okay, I appreciate that. Donald, questions for staff? Garrett, questions for staff? Siri? David? Okay. Let's ask if the applicant wants to make a presentation. No? Okay, then let's go to public comment.
The city clerk's office will start with speaker cards that I've received from those who are here in the council chambers, and then I will go to Zoom. So if you are in, joining us via Zoom, please raise your hand. We'll start with Sarah Malone. Following Sarah Malone will be Eric Weineger, Paul Carroll, James Garcia, and Selena Wong.
Welcome, Sarah.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Malone. I'm a concerned resident of Rancho Cordova and Stone Creek neighborhood. I'm submitting my comments in opposition to the resolution to approve the Logistics Center project. This project has been opposed to from the beginning by the residents of Rancho Cordova for a variety of sound invalid reasons. The city council has refused to listen to the residents of Rancho Cordova and Stone Creek neighborhood. This project will have a significant impact on our quality of life, the air that we breathe, the safety in our neighborhood, the increase in traffic, and the value of our homes. So to Donald's, Terry's point to invite folks to live here, I can't can't do that. To ignore this, these facts, under the guise of our hands are tied is a cowardly way of stating we just don't care. You don't live in our area and you will not be impacted. Your hands were not tied, you just chose to listen to an attorney whose claim to fame is bypassing SEQA for developers. We as residents provided you with ample reasons to deny this project, all of which were legitimate. Yet you chose to listen to the city attorney rather than your residents or their attorney. The developer agreement has expired. It expired as of July 1, 2018. But if you want to believe it valid, there was verbiage within Government Code, Section 65865.3B, pointed out to you on more than one occasion that allows for you to modify or suspend the provisions within the development agreement if you could agree with the residents, that the failure of you to do so would place us in harm's way. That verbiage alone unties your hands, yet you still choose to favor the developer. I'm more than disappointed in your leadership. I would like to add that the project is a shell, so there's no way to determine the impact the project will or won't have, so the traffic and noise studies that were completed are subsequently invalid. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Is it Eric who's next? Eric?
Hello again, everyone. There's a famous Sherlock Holmes story about an investigation in which a key aspect of the puzzle was determining the significance of the dog that didn't bark. This is The Adventure of Silver Streak. From Wikipedia, the explanation is the phrase, "The dog didn't bark," is often used as a shorthand way of saying that if we believe that a proposition is made true in virtue of corresponding to fact, then the absence of one or more relevant facts indicates that the proposition is likely not true. This is usually called evidence of absence, whereby the expectation of evidence makes its absence significant. To me, the dog that didn't bark significantly is in what we are considering here includes a number of points. First of all, we presented credible evidence of a serious health impact to the community and to the nearby sensitive receptors of Navigator School. Where is the response to that aspect? Does SEQA exemption mean that the community concerns can be ignored? That we can willingly expose our most valuable asset, our children, to unhealthful levels of pollution? Next is there have been many instances of nonresponsiveness to questions and comments over many months. We had to wait until just last Friday to get many of our concerns addressed directly. Next, we and then we only got this brevity of summary just three days before the critical vote here. The biggest dog that didn't bark was a clear mindset that is oriented towards the developers. There was no discussion of possible positive attributes of our interpretations of the law by either ourselves or by our lawyer representative. There was no absence, there was an absence of a questioning and skeptical mind. The default condition, that an echo chamber, is what I would call it, was to accept the developer's position and not to question the premises behind many of those assertions. To our view, there was no real examination of our positions. And it just looks like the tail is wagging the dog here. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Is it Paul that's next? Paul?
Good evening.
Good evening, Paul.
Paul Carroll from Stone Creek. I notice in the change of the condition on number 83 that the big issue that I would choose to raise has been addressed, that in fact, it wasn't about a mitigation plan for the Logistics Center, but it was fulfilling the requirements that were set out in the EIR of 2002. An EIR that has existed for 20 years, an EIR that has consistently been looked to for SEQA waiver on all projects that have been proved by Elliott. To date, as I've said, we've not seen any documentation that that mitigation has in fact occurred, that that bank, that credit in Elliott's bank has been removed from use. If it is not removed from use before the DA expires in June of 2023, Elliott will have 83 acres in that mitigation bank that they can commit to another project. It's if it's so, sort of as a side note, much like the residents of Stone Creek, the Swainson Hawks prefer the existing neighborhood as is. We've had sightings of four Hawks in the area in the last week. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. James?
James Garcia.
Welcome, James.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out this lovely little scale here. So once again, I'm here to oppose the proposed development for the Logistics Center project. I'm opposed to this project for several reasons. One, development agreement is invalid and expired as of July 1, 2018, at the latest per state government code regarding development agreements. That limits to 15 years. Two, the design does not meet the requirements for size and scale for the neighborhood as part of the Z Spa. If an average home has 2,400 square feet, and the building would end up being a scale of 1 to 64, the same as this lovely little Hot Wheels car right here. This is my home. Outside was a big car. That actually is the true warehouse that you are building. That does not meet size and scale. That is in the design guidelines of the Z Spa. Not a developer agreement requirement, but the Z Spa, size and scale, 64 times. A proper SEQA review is required due to new substantial information not addressed in the EIR nor supplemental EIR. We brought forth evidence. Four, the city council needs to enact their policing power as it pertains to Government Code 565865.3B. The city may modify or suspend the provisions of the development agreement if the city determines that the failure of the city to do so would place the residents of the territory subject to the development agreement or the residents of the city, or both, in a condition dangerous to their health or safety or both, to properly determine the health risk. So again, this is not the scale. Who wants to drive this? Do you want to go out outside and go on the road and drive this? This is a Hot Wheels car. That is the same size and scale of our homes to these monstrosity warehouses that you're proposing to come in. That does not meet it. You have a design guideline review only, so use that design guideline scale. Do you like it? I think so.
Thank you, James. Who's next?
Selena Wong.
Selena, welcome.
Following Selena will be Jennifer Garcia and then Mitch Schwank.
Hi, Selena Wong, resident of Stone Creek. Welcome. I I want to say that other communities who are facing this type of development have fought on the same issues and exact same points as we are. Noise, traffic, air pollution, health and safety, if placed right next to residences. This isn't a coincidence. It's exactly the same argument in every single community from Southern California to Northern California. So to turn your back on the obvious is a travesty at best. Please do not ignore the obvious. The developer does not live here. We do. This decision is an unprecedented life stressor. We are not okay. I'd love to enjoy all the community events that you've talked about. And in fact, you know, there were days when we used to. But these days, it's really hard to do this with this looming in our future. Know that you are impacting lives, especially those who cannot afford to seek safety by moving away. I hope you sleep well, because I really won't be sleeping well, and I haven't. Thank you.
Thank you, Selena. Jennifer? Welcome, Jennifer.
Hi, good evening. Thank you.
In person, not on Zoom.
I know, I made it here. Had to drop off the case. Jennifer Garcia, Stone Creek resident. I'm coming on, put on my glasses so I can read what I wrote here. First, I'm here in opposition of these warehouses. I do believe the developer agreement is invalid and has expired as of July 1, 2018. And that we need another SEQA review. The city council needs to enact their policing power and it pertains to California State Code, Section 65865.3B. I'm not going to read it, because you've already heard it a couple of times here this evening. But I'm going to point out once again that this is right next to Navigator Elementary School. Out of the 379 children at Navigator Elementary, 41.7% are considered socially and economically disadvantaged. 4.7% are homeless, and 16.4% of the students are with disabilities. You are putting kids that are socially and economically disadvantaged at a higher risk by building these warehouses. You have an obligation to the city, not to the developers. You haven't responded to our lawyer. We have several residents who are authorities in their fields. You haven't listened to us. I would just ask that you please listen to us and deny this project on design review. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Mitch?
Following Mitch will be Troy Fennell and then Brenda Gustin.
Hi, my name is Mitch. I'm a resident introverted Stone Creek, but I'm so upset I still have to come here. I'm here to employ you to seek independent legal counsel regarding the approval of the Logistics Center. The independent counsel should not be referred to or those who work with Adam Lindgren at the same private practice as him. The reason I'm asking you to do this is there appears to be a clear conflict conflict of interest from the city's attorney, Adam Lindgren. And here are the reasons. First, he has worked on this agreement in the past and may not want to express conflicting viewpoints or to shield himself from liabilities or lawsuits. Second, he doesn't want to leave open the possibility that he may have provided the wrong direction in his past decisions. Third, in his private practice at Mayor's nave, he appears to represent private firms such as Dermody to retain his many rights on behalf of their private client and take them away from the city and us, the residents. Sorry, totally introverted. Because of those reasons, I don't feel that Mr. Lindgren has the best interests of Rancho Cordova in mind and is more about the interest of the private companies like Dermody. Not saying he represents him or his company. Also, it shows that our city attorney might not have enough time to allocate to represent this, because he works for or has worked during his time here as attorney for Modesto, Monterey, San City, and a bunch of other places around California. So I don't know how he finds the time to properly inform you. Anyway, I'm also want to bring up Section 65865.3 states that you can't go past the 15 years. If you would had time to research this and maybe inform you, you would learn, you would know, you can't go past 15 years. There's no way around it. You can't change, make amendments, do whatever, you can't get past 15 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mitch. Troy?
Good evening, Troy Fennell, Stone Creek resident. Earlier tonight, the summary of the councilperson reports was a pleading for more people in the city to build more schools sooner. That's a great point. However, refusing to support your citizens and turn our residential areas into massive warehouse and trucking areas forces people out of your city, does not draw them in. I'd like to draw your attention to the slideshow presented this evening by the city management. The first slide, again, misrepresentation. I don't see how a river with people leisurely kayaking adequately portrays 155,000 square foot warehouse that will be impacting with trucks. So perhaps maybe a more honest evaluation on your visual impact. On slide three, it was pointed out, and I quote in section after the code, "Because those findings, specifically A and B thereof, could have prevented development of the subject property to the density or intensity of development," and it goes on. Again, you guys are picking and choosing what you want to do to support your peace. We've untied your hands, we've provided you legal analysis, we've actually done more homework than what many of us feel your, our own attorney has provided to get us out of this situation. Yet, you continue to want to favor the builder and have your residents sue you in place of the builder. On slide five, the property is zoned as business professional and warehousing is listed as a permitted use. Notice, it's not granted, it's not guaranteed, it's not predetermined, it is permitted. You as the city council have the ability to say, no, this is dangerous to our city and we are residents, and we do not want it as an imposed unnecessary risk to our population. On slide 10, again, the project is exempt from SEQA because you say so? We've provided you evidence that says this project is out of compliance with all of this stuff. How does an EIR that is 20 years old, that we now have new federal and state mandates require protections? How is that current? How does an exemption of a 20-year-old document stand in place? On stage, page five, will you provide written justifications for these exemptions? Or is it just the because we said so? On slide 13, the last bullet point talks about adding electricity for the refrigerator trucks to plug in.
Please wrap up your comments.
If they proceed to do so, I would encourage you to make that mandatory, because you never know when the refrigerator know when the refrigerated truck is going to show up. Thank you.
Thank you, Troy. Brenda?
My name is Brenda Augustin. The city is aware that the 2016 extension of the development agreement is under scrutiny by many citizens, and legal opinion has been offered by the citizens' council. Therefore, it seems that the developer and the city may not have the authority to make a decision this evening, even regarding the design review of this project. A petition for declaratory relief can be filed to determine its validity. The city is aware that when the development agreement was entered into, the design of the project was far different than this current proposal. While modifications are being considered, the hazardous air quality and traffic issues are not resolved. Since this development agreement is very possibly expired, a CEQA based on known information now, in 2023, with regard to developments such as this, are being denied elsewhere, and others are being built in areas more conducive to this amount of vehicular traffic, especially trucks. Mayor Lynda Budge stated in one of the council meetings regarding design that the original intent in this development agreement was the business and professional, to build a two-story office complex much different than the ones being proposed now and built. The neighborhood has researched the negative ramifications of such a development, and the city offered the developer another location at Mather, which is much more suited to this type of development, which I truly appreciate, but am disappointed that it was reneged upon. If the city council chooses to continue to allow this development and forego the original intent for the property, I appreciate that you've held meetings to ascertain ideas from the citizens, but it really, truly feels like a moot point right now, and it seems like council should really talk to the citizens and their attorney before decisions are made like tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda.
Next speaker is Helen Wayland-Bishaw. Following Helen will be Valerie Knippschild and Catherine Whitcomb.
I'm Helen Wayland-Bishaw, and I do not live in the Stone Creek area. Yeah, thank you, Lynda. I have several concerns. When you start talking about legal obligations, many items have been pointed out to the council. Are you willing to open legal proceedings against the people who elected you? What type of public opinion will be rendered about the city of Rancho Cordova that has added a half-cent sales tax, gives a lot to the community for enhancing the environment, but yet turns a blind's eye to the fact that the citizens in one area have pointed out the problems with this project? They're legally should be settled before you go forward with it. That is a prudent thing to do. I render that the city needs to, A, maybe have an impartial attorney representing the citizens on this project, since his website shows he really favors the builders when it comes to CEQA, makes a lot of money off of it. I do believe that the presentation that was made, that talked about the 67% reduction in emissions and the air quality would be increased, nothing in that report shows the construction of this huge warehouse that's going to have diesel vehicles there, nor the increase probably of the planes coming into the Mather Strip. So another issue that I have is, if a child is harmed in any way, who's going to take personal responsibility? Once a child is injured, that is a lifelong process. That denies that child the opportunities to go to the world with a healthy body and mind and not be a cripple from a young age. So I really think the city needs to reconsider. These folks in Stone Creek have thrown everything in your face, showing you where their shortcomings and where you're opening yourself up for legal obligations to fight your own citizens. I personally have contributed to their legal cause. I will continue to contribute to their legal endeavors, because I feel this project represents some shortcomings of how you're going to treat the rest of Rancho Cordova. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Valerie?
Thank you. Good evening, council members and city staff. Our neighbors to the east, El Dorado Hills, had a project, 4.8 square feet, being proposed by Dermody, that they withdrew as of last week, Dermody did. Before this, Dermody gave the county an economic impact analysis. This document was a guiding device for the residents. They found huge errors of revenue they would have never received. I want to know how we can obtain an economic impact analysis from the developer. I asked planning, and they referred me to the city clerk to see if I could get these documents. The city responded right away. I was surprised, because I thought it was going to take two weeks. They responded that day and said there's no such documents in-house. Does the city request this type of document before a project is accepted or approved? Wouldn't that document be beneficial to the city? You would know how much money you were going to receive, if you would want to approve something that huge and not receive any money off of it or revenue, but I think that we should get that document from them to see if this is a beneficial project. Lastly, are there any NDAs on this project? Because they had an NDA on the El Dorado Project Frontier project.
Define NDA.
Non-disclosure agreement. Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. Catherine Whitcomb?
I think I heard my name over the applause. Is that Catherine Whitcomb? Yes, hi, that's me. I am a resident of Stone Creek, and I, in good company with many of my neighbors and now friends, oppose the warehouses. I'm going to ask, I think you're aware of the banners that line Zinfandel Drive. The city has placed them. They're big, beautiful, colorful banners. One of them says "Think," and I've been doing a lot of thinking, and I am quite confused, frankly. I find the actions or the inactions of our city council to defy reason in thinking. Another banner asks me to play in Rancho Cordova, and I do play. I run, I ride my bike, I'm out with my family and friends, I'm traveling across the streets in our neighborhood, I'm using the multi-use trail that encircles the stormwater basin that's threatened by the development of the warehouses. And the city has invited me to come and live here and to play, and I fear that these development actions will compromise that. The banners also ask me to work, and I work in Rancho Cordova. I ride my bike to work, I walk to work, I walk down Spado Drive where I live, I cross over Zinfandel Drive. You know the stretch of Zinfandel Drive from 50 to North Mather, where these large semi-trucks are going to travel repeatedly, right? Do you know how many crosswalks there are on that stretch of Zinfandel Drive?
Please continue.
Would you guess how many there are, based on your familiarity with that stretch of road?
Some of us are very familiar with it. Please continue.
There are 16. There are children who cross, people with dogs who cross, people crossing that street to go from their home to Sprouts, will be going from their home to get coffee, right? Are traveling across that street to go to school, are traveling across that street to go to Stone Creek Community Park. These trucks, and the people who now drive on Zinfandel Drive at high rates of speed, are going to collide with somebody, and we're going to have somebody hurt, right? The safety issues alone question, have me question, your judgment. You are charged to act on behalf of the public good, and I'm not convinced you are. Opposing views have given you a list, two feet long, of reasons to stop this project, and yet you claim your hands are tied. I don't believe it, right? And if you buckle under threats of lawsuits, I question your courage, I question your foresight, I question your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine.
Those are the speaker cards that I have. I'm going to go to Zoom, and the first speaker in Zoom is Gloria Smith. Gloria, I have unmuted you, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Welcome, Gloria.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. You may know that my office submitted two letters today in response to the draft findings in support of the project. These letters addressed the city's attempt to illegally exempt the project from CEQA, the fact that the DA is in fact null and void, and neither party is bound by it, and the fact that the city's April 17 vote to approve the project was a prejudicial abuse of discretion and denied the residents of Rancho Cordova a fair hearing in this matter, all because the developer threatened you with $100 million lawsuit. CEQA, the record is clear from air quality experts that the project is subject to the act, given its potential for severe air quality and GHG impacts, but the city has repeatedly denied that CEQA applies because of the development agreement. It supposedly limits your discretion to design review only. So let's turn to the DA. Without getting into whether it was properly transferred from Sacramento County to Rancho in the first place, the law is crystal clear that the DA expired after 15 years, which was 2018, by operation of law. This is unequivocal. I've asked three land use attorneys to look at this, and all agree with my office's assessment, as do all of the major land use treatises in California, and the city's record and actions going back to 2004 prove what I'm saying. The draft resolution doesn't deny that the DA expired after 15 years. It merely provided the timeline upon which we all agree. Here's the thing. As required by law, in 2004, this body voted to reduce the transfer DA's term from 20 years to 15. Why? Because the city council had to take that vote, or the transfer DA from Sacramento County would have expired in eight years under the government code. You did the right thing. But in 2016, approaching that 15-year mark, this body illegally voted to reinstate the original 20-year term. The council took this illegal action rather than simply let the agreement with Sacramento County lapse and enter into your own contract with the developer. Again, why? Likely because you didn't want the hassle of a public process and CEQA review for a new agreement. Regardless, in 2023, that DA is null and void. Turning to the developer's threats. The developer has repeatedly threatened the city with litigation should it not bent toe its will. It's now claiming failure to approve the warehouse projects will cost the city $100 million. Two points on this. If we assume the DA is valid, it expressly limits the developer's claim for money damages in Sections 64 and 6.5. There would be no $100 million judgment.
Please wrap up your comments.
I need 17 more seconds, if that's okay? Second, the city's vote to approve the project based on the developer's threats to sue was unlawful and prejudicial to city residents. It deprived them of a fair hearing on the merits of this case.
Thank you, Gloria.
Thank you very much. I conclude.
Matt Henderson?
The next speaker is Matt Henderson. Matt, I've unmuted you, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Welcome, Matt.
Very much. Can everyone hear me?
You need to be a little louder.
I will try to be louder then. Thank you, Mayor Budge, Vice Mayor Sander, and honorable members of the city council, Matt Henderson, Miller Star Regalia, on behalf of the project applicants. I just wanted to, I won't take very long. I did want to, at the outset, thank staff for their time and attention and effort on this project. It's been much appreciated. With respect to the comments that have been made tonight and previously, I would just like to say, to observe, that none of the comments that were made today added anything new or different to the exhaustive analysis and examination that this project has already undergone, and we feel very comfortable and confident in the legal conclusions that have led the council to this moment. I would just emphasize that not one, not two, but three separate law firms have looked at these issues and reached the same conclusion, and of course, two of those law firms represent the city directly. My client manifestly does not want a lawsuit or litigation in this case, but in the unfortunate event that one is filed by project opponents, we will absolutely back the city in its approval and defend the necessary steps the city is taking to recognize my client's vested rights under the development agreement and otherwise. And that's all I wanted to say this evening, and once again, I appreciate the council's very considered and deliberate attention to these very difficult matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. We have more hands?
We do not have any additional hands in Zoom, but the city clerk's office did receive 13 public comments via email. Those emails have been distributed to the city council, they've been placed on the city's website, and they have been printed for those who are in the council chambers. The comments were received from the following individuals. Paul Carroll, Mark Berry, Eric Weiniger, James Pockel, and Judith Laramie, Brenda Augustin, Valerie Knippschild, Sarah Malone, Jennifer Garcia, James Garcia, Adam Caslin, Jordan Caslin, Gloria Smith, and Dawn Davison.
Thank you, Stacy. Okay, just looking at the screen, it said two people raised their hand. Were those the two people we heard from? Okay, all right. Then we'll close the public hearing. Staff, anything else to add? Okay. Colleagues, Donald?
I just have one question for the city attorney. There was a claim that we've not made any responses to Ms. Smith. I think I heard that by more than one, that the city hasn't responded to her letters. Would that be accurate?
No, it's not. We took the unusual step of not only providing my analysis and our answers to the issues that came up in numerous staff reports, but also you actually released an opinion letter that you received from outside council. The managing partner of Hanson Bridget, again, did the independent analysis, in the course of which they were asked and invited, "If you find any different answers here, please provide them," and they provided a written analysis of this. The analysis also in the documents that are in front of you includes pages on this subject.
Thank you.
Anything else? Donald? Garrett?
I still, let's see what I'm allowed to say. Hold on. I find what you guys say very poignant, to the point, and I have all the same concerns. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Garrett. Siri?
I want to thank you all for showing up time and time again, reiterating what you think is, what you feel. Let me say that, sitting here, I am with you on the fact, I personally don't want warehouses here. I do understand the impact that it does have on the residents, and... I do understand the impact that it does have on the residents, and if there was any way that I do see out of it, I would definitely go for that path, and you guys know that. So I'm going to ask the city attorney the question, is the DA valid?
Yes, in our opinion and the opinion of outside counsel, the DA is valid.
You're outside counsel.
The city's outside counsel.
Thank you. We have the discussion up here, please.
So, and I'm going to go on the theme of, you know, the dog that didn't bark. I'm going to talk about Malcolm Gladwell's What the Dog Saw, which is basically, you got to see this world through our lens, see what we're seeing, and that is why we're coming to the conclusions that we are. And we do live here, and we do want it to be a better city, so that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Siri. David?
Couple of questions for Adam. Could you comment on that DA expiration issue? We must have heard that repeated 10 or 15 times tonight.
Sure.
As well as from the resident's attorney, who was on the call just earlier. Could you go a little deeper into that?
Sure. We looked at, and Hanson Bridget looked at, we looked closely at the section that they cited. We looked at that section years before, and we think that it does not apply for a number of reasons that are, you know, detailed in the draft findings of approval. We think both the straight legislative, the straight statutory reading of it supports that it doesn't apply here. We think that the legislative history doesn't support that it would apply here, and we think that the city's pattern of practice over the last 20 years, including over the period of that amendment that they're talking about, would support a determination by a court that that section doesn't apply and invalidate the DA.
So these DA extensions are commonplace in California?
So DA extensions are commonplace in California. As you know, incorporations of cities are less common, but yes, DA extensions are quite common, and there are a number of issues that are before you that are quite common and some that are less common.
There was a reference made, again, for you, Adam, there's a reference made to limited damages under the DA. Was that in a letter today, I think that issue was raised? Do you have any comment on that?
Yeah, we stand by our damages analysis. Our firm, on behalf of cities, has been involved in some of the largest and most consequential damages claimed involving DAs in state. We have read that analysis closely, as has outside counsel, and we stand by our assessment of those risks. Some of that assessment and some of the details of it remain the subject of closed session. I will not go into more detail, but we have looked at that issue closely. That's not a new issue, and we stand by our analysis on that issue.
And that was our external counsel's opinion as well? So if this project goes forward, and the residents choose to sue over it, who actually defends that lawsuit?
I'm sorry, if...
So if the residents sue the city, saying you filed improper process, CEQA, whatever their arguments are, who pays to defend the city in that case?
Yeah, for, since the city's incorporation and throughout its entire history, we have insisted with applicants, as is quite industry standard, that they provide indemnification to the city. And there would be outside councils selected by the city that would defend that litigation, and the developer, as they restated here today, would be paying for that litigation.
Condition number two.
Indemnification, right. So that's our standard practice. I just want to be sure everyone understood.
That's standard, and it's not something that, it's something that was in their original application, as is in the application of all of our standard permits.
Okay, thank you, Adam. I've got a number of comments, residents, and these are not going to be in the best, most organized order, because I'm responding to things I heard and things I thought before. So I apologize, this comes off a little more random than I would like, but hopefully these are comments that are pertinent here. So I heard a comment early on that said the dermody could pull out of here, pull out of these projects, and that's absolutely true. They could, and they could do so without $100 million lawsuit, as they just pulled out of that project in El Dorado. Unfortunately for us, in El Dorado, there was, fortunately for the residents of El Dorado County, there was no DA in place under which they could apply. Therefore, they had to do a general sales job, saying these warehouses will be good for your community, and you can see how well that turned out. They chose to withdraw the project rather than try to pursue it, because El Dorado had a lot of flexibility that we do not have. There was some reference tonight to paperwork errors, like the annual reviews, and this might be a question for you, Adam, actually. Generally, I think, in California law, those things are viewed as inconsequential to the substance of the document. So I know a lot of public agencies, a lot of private companies, a lot of individuals misfile things, don't keep track of something, don't do something they're technically supposed to do, but that isn't, that doesn't undermine the entire process.
That's correct. There is not a single case that says that failing to do an annual review invalidates the DA.
Now, it is a problem that we haven't done those, in my view, because we should be, as a city, better than that. We have always aimed to perform at a very high level, and so that's a little disappointing. But I understand there are probably a multitude of things like that out there in the public sector and the private sector. So the issues here are noise, traffic, air pollution, safety, and we're all having to live under a definition of business and professional use that the county put in their zoning code in 2003. That's what brings us here. I've said before, I think Linda, who was active back in those days as well, would say, no one ever thought business and professional would be a 48-foot-high warehouse. And frankly, I don't think any of us up here want this. We have listened a lot. We've been accused of not listening. So we've listened a lot. We've responded a lot. The problem is, the responses we have to give, based on what we know, are not what residents want to hear. They're not the responses I want to give. They're not even the votes I want to make. But sitting on this side of the dais, you have a very broad responsibility, not to a single neighbor or neighborhood or group of individuals, but to an entire city of 86,000 people and all of our future residents, in a level of decision that is a weight on our shoulders every day. Eric, I always appreciate your analogies about the dog didn't bark. That one, I'm going to have to give some thought, though, honestly. I can say, you know, the city has acted in cases where we can't here. We have purchased property to stop warehouses from being built on that property closest to the school. That was something we could do. Lot of you have mentioned that there's a, you know, a serious aspect of health concern here, and I don't disagree. We have had very extensive, deliberate, lengthy discussions of our legal situation in closed session, as we have to, because if we did that in public, we would eliminate our ability to litigate, or to defend ourselves, or to defend you. We can't have all those strategy discussions in public. It's just the facts of how things work. But don't think that we haven't discussed this. What we've tried to do, is what Adam mentioned, make as much of that deliberation opinion public as we could to give you an idea about what those items are. There was a request for a DA extension here recently, you may have heard about. I heard from a lot of you about it. I think I responded to some of you, but I'll tell you all now, that's not going to happen. There will be no DA extension. And with regard to the DA, I hope you guys, I really hope you guys, follow through on all the options that you have available to you. Our legal position is such, with this DA in place and with the law around CEQA, that residents are in a far better position than we are, frankly, to fight this, as everything in state law is stacked against us doing it. There is no turning our back here. There are no options here. So Valerie, you mentioned an impact statement for the El Dorado Hills, a financial impact statement. I think that was part of the applicant's sales pitch there, in trying to sell it. I think it had a bunch of holes in it, and so didn't do its job, and project was withdrawn. They didn't have to present us with anything, because under the law, they have every right to build this, under the DA and under CEQA. All those decisions were made 20 years ago. What we're left with is design review. So they didn't have to sell us on the economics, because frankly, I don't think they could. This is not the economic choice any of us would have made, because from a city's perspective, if it was just a complete mercenary perspective about how much money could we make, this is probably the last thing in line that we would suggest, because here we'll get property tax, probably won't get any sales tax. We'll have some jobs, but they're not the best jobs. There's no entrepreneurship here, most likely. And it's going to be out-of-town owner. I think in this case, it's probably a New York hedge fund. Is the owner indirect owner? So that, this is not anything that we would ever propose. There's been a lot of discussion here about outside counsel versus in-house versus another outside counsel. I just want to say again, we have looked at every possible legal option multiple times. And I think the developer's done the same, and that's why they're here. They know there's a vulnerability here. I can also say that the role of your outside counsel, your counsel, is vastly different from our in-house and our outside counsel, because Adam and his firm, as well as our outside counsel, have a professional liability about the opinions they render for us. Your counsel has no such liability. So your counsel's more in the position of taking a bunch of spaghetti, throwing it against the wall, and hoping something sticks. Our counsel has to say with specificity, that sticks and that doesn't. And if they're wrong, they pay. So the standards are vastly different about what sort of analysis they have to do and what sort of claims and assertions they can make. It's a very, it's just, I don't want those two really on a level playing field, because it's not the same thing. So, look, bottom line, I've said this before, these are, I think, terrible projects in the wrong location. They're going to have negative impacts on our residents. Noise, air, traffic, safety. In my view, they are morally challenged, and I would invite the applicant to withdraw the project. In the event they don't do that, which is likely, because again, this is a New York hedge fund, then the city is going to have to act mightily to defend our residents with whatever tools we can find going forward. At the last meeting, someone suggested that might can beat right, and I'm afraid that is the case here. Those are my comments.
Okay. Thank you, David. So when I said I had two Mother's Day, Mother's Day days, Sunday afternoon was spent with over 10 members of family who are original homeowners in Stone Creek, just as we were. So, yeah, guys, I know exactly what you're talking about. I know the 16 crossings you're talking about, because I've walked them with the dog. In the days, we used to walk four miles around the loop. I've seen, the first year we were there in 2002, caught 24 mice in the garage, so I know what's coming. But I also, in our lovely big house, we had windowsills that were caked with the brown dirt from the construction and aren't ever going to come clean until somebody actually gets in there and scrubs them. And I learned how to catch tree frogs, because the tree frogs always came and hung out in the backyard, and I would take them and throw them across the street. So I know, for those of you who've lived there a long time, for those of you who've lived there a short time, I know the neighborhood well, and I agree with absolutely everything that David has just said. From my perspective, I have read every condition of approval. I have been through the architectural plans. I have done everything. I've read all 13 pages of justifications, and I have tried to do everything that I have a legal right to do to set this project up, not for, not for neighborhood failure, but for our ability to monitor it and to keep it under wraps, is not a really good, a really good way to talk about it, but to keep it as light an imposition on the neighborhood as we are legally able to do that. And yes, I suspect if our first vote were to encourage dermody to withdraw, we would, that would probably get a lot of hands raised. So, Donald, you avoided comment. Do you want to make comments?
I wouldn't say avoided, but I was asking questions, which is what you had asked me before, public comment. No, I don't disagree with anything I heard from David, or Siri, or Linda. Like I've said, I don't believe voting no on this is preventing the project. There's a reason that, when we got close to having this vote, and we learned that the residents had gotten legal counsel, I asked for an independent, non-affiliated-to-anything-to-do-with-the-city law firm to evaluate all sides that we were seeing. Honestly, it felt fairly straightforward until Ms. Smith's letter, and she made many claims that I hadn't heard, and I listened to them. And I was the one that went to the city manager and went to the city attorney and said, go find somebody else that can evaluate this, that doesn't have any business or clients before the city, and evaluate all of the arguments that we see. While I took the LSATs, and I, at one point in my life, wanted to become an attorney, I didn't become one, and I didn't feel qualified to be making those kinds of decisions or evaluating those arguments. That's why we pay attorneys to do that. And resoundingly, the third-party law firm said that we were in an indefensible position. And the precedent that it creates by denying a project like this against so many other developments that have development agreements is a massive liability to the city, to a city that also has always enjoyed surpluses and good bond ratings, and all of that could have been put into peril. But like a lot of my colleagues just said, this is not the project I would choose. Sure, I would invite the developer to withdraw the application or build something else, and I know that there are a lot of folks that showed up to, you know, design community meetings, that came there because they wanted to talk to the developer about building something completely different, and the developer had options as far as what paint colors and trees and other things could be put there, because that's what a design review process is. And as much as we want to have a different conversation about a different subject, which is denying it or building something else, we do not have the ability to compel them to do that. The example of El Dorado Hills, if you read closely into that, they were requesting rezoning. It was not zoned to build that thing there, and they had to get permission from what I believe was the planning commission, in order to just start the EIR and do the rest of those things. It looked pretty clear that the planning commission was going to deny it, and so they withdrew it, because they didn't have the right to build it, like they do in this case. So again, I mean, comparing, and I remember when I saw that story the first time, like, I know folks are going to come and bring that as an example and say, look, see, they got rid of it. But they had the power. It's a completely different question in front of us. My kids play soccer in those fields right there, right next to where this is being built. And I get it, and I was very supportive of purchasing the other land that we're talking of purchasing the, the other land that we're talking about. I think we're going to lose a significant amount of money just on that purchase. But hopefully at some point, we can sell that to some developer that will put something there that is amenable to the community, like additional housing. But that's $15 million out of the general fund that wasn't planned for, well, maybe not out of the general fund, but it's $15 million out of special funds and other things to do that, that now aren't available to do other things in the community. Like finish the community center or the mine shaft project, now that there are things like that that we're going to have to figure out, where are we going to get the funding for these things that we've been talking about for years, if, months and years? So I feel, I feel for everyone that's involved in this. And I, I don't take any of the comments lightly that I've heard. I've read every email, every letter that comes in. I've listened to every comment from when this, this process started, but from when this process started, it started, in my opinion, from the wrong question. Because you had folks that came in here and said, just deny the project when this is design review. That's, that's all we have the power to do. And anybody telling you different than that, I'm not saying they're lying, but they sure as heck aren't informed. And if, if I could do something about this, I would. And when, and again, when we got the resident attorney sending us letters and saying, these are the claims that they had, I hit the brakes. I was the person that raised my hand and said, go find me an attorney that has nothing to do with this process. Start over, read everything that you see, everything that's being claimed, and tell me who, who's most liable here and who's most defensible. And that's where we are today. So at the end of the day, I, I don't envy this vote, but this is why we get elected, is to do what's best for the city. And what's best for the city is not to have an over $100 million legal liability.
Thank you, Donald. Are we ready for a motion?
I'll move the item.
Thank you. Is there a second? Then I will second the item. Stacy, call the rule, please.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood.
No.
Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes. Okay, motion carries.
Sorry, boss.
Motion carries.
Thank you all.
And the motion was to approve the project with the findings as presented.
Correct. Thank you all, most sincerely. Guys, we want a five-minute recess or just keep going? I know nobody's going home, so.
Keep going.
Okay. Stacy, will you read 12-point, or 11.2?
11.2, Stone Creek Industrial Center Major Design Review Amendment Project Number PLND-1121-0020.
Good evening, Mayor Budge, members of the council. Darcy Geller with the Planning Department. I'm here this evening with Albert Stricker, Public Works Director. Before you this evening is the Stone Creek Industrial Center Major Design Review Amendment. The purpose of tonight's meeting will be to present project changes since the April 17th City Council meeting. Receive testimony, continue the public hearing to June 5th. Ask for any questions, deliberate, provide staff sufficient detailed direction to return with final hearing documents and/or plan revisions at the June 5th City Council meeting. Just a reminder, the project request is a major design review for development of four light industrial warehouse projects totaling 602,4,000 square feet. Or 4,000, 004 square feet, sorry. That include parking, lighting, landscaping located within the villages as Zinfandel Special Planning Area. This map you've seen before, it just shows the overall planned area as well as the context of where the project is located. As you recall, at the last meeting, an ad hoc subcommittee was appointed with two members of the council. That ad hoc subcommittee met twice prior to a May 4th community meeting that was held and then afterwards. At the May 4th community meeting, approximately 29 residents were in attendance. As part of that community meeting, we had a roundtable discussion where the tables were able to discuss various potential changes to the project as well as concerns that they had amongst themselves. After that, each table did a report out to the group in terms of what their concerns were. That information was then gathered and provided to the applicant as well as there were a couple of different things added or given to the applicant. One was the report out from the tables. The other thing was all of the comments that were provided to the residents at that subcommittee meeting for the applicant to take a look at. Additionally, the ad hoc subcommittee had some additional requests after meeting the second time. This presentation is going to go through the different requests that were made as well as the changes the applicant is proposing. As well as a significant amount of conditions of approval that will be added to the project, including some that are standard conditions of approval that we add on all projects. And so we'll go through those. The subcommittee, after reviewing everything that occurred at the community meeting, suggested some additional changes. One of that was to modify the entrance facade and extend windows to make an office design. Replace eucalyptus trees with another evergreen species and provide taller trees. Hours of operation would be to prohibit any onsite truck activity from 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. And in terms of request by the applicant for overnight concrete pours, the subcommittee agreed that there will be times that that may be needed. And a request would need to be made in advance and require a 10-day notice to the surrounding residents. So this slide, I just want to go over some of the changes that the applicant proposed to make based upon the various community suggestions. One being, they will be reducing the interior clear height from 36 feet to 42 feet, which equals a 38-foot roofline. And then the corners would be 40 feet in height. They will be replacing the eucalyptus tree with an evergreen tree. And will work with the city arborists to identify the appropriate evergreen as well as incorporating taller trees for screening. The applicant is proposing to modify the, the phasing of the site to construct buildings closest to Baroque to provide a buffer for future development of the back half. The applicant is also amenable to relocating the emergency vehicle access from Baroque to Ocelot if council concurs. And we're going to talk more about that in a future slide. Additionally, there's several new conditions of approval that would, could be added to the project as well as some of the, the comments that were raised during the meeting that talk about construction impacts like air. Those are standard conditions of approval we place on projects. So the Sacramento Air Quality Management District, they require somebody to comply with what they call the Rule 403 fugitive dust measure, and that's for construction impacts. So some of the, whether they were operational or long-term comments that were provided are already addressed through conditions. Another example would be compliance with stormwater and drainage requirements. So with that, I'm going to turn this part of the presentation over to Albert.
Thank you, Darcy, and good evening, Mayor Budge and members of the council, Albert Stricker with the Public Works Department. And I'll be preventing, presenting on various aspects of infrastructure and access. First, on the site map, you can see access is currently located for the emergency vehicle access off of Baroque, that it would be for emergency services only. And Darcy will be talking more about that access location and options. The developer would be required to construct a seven-foot sidewalk along the entire Zinfandel frontage. The north and middle driveways, which are the top and middle on the picture there, would be right in, right out, right out only. There is a median there which would block left turn access, so there will be no left turn access, neither in nor out from the north and the middle driveway. The south driveway is proposed to have a signal. And we have asked the, the engineers to take another look at other options to maintain the straight trail alignment through there without realigning it. And they have found a solution to that signal design that maintains the straight trail alignment through the intersection. Trucks would largely use the south and middle access. And most of those trucks that are coming from, if not all of the trucks coming from Freeway 50 would largely be turning left at the intersection and directly into that southernmost, southernmost driveway that's signalized a little bit.
Albert, could you go back that one side? Are you saying that trail that's shown their way at the bottom of this slide will be continued in its current location?
That's correct.
And it will be protected by the same signal that operates that southernmost intersection here?
That's correct.
Or driveway? Okay.
And I'll have more information on that, more detail on the, the coming, coming two slides. In this case, on the site plan, north is generally to the right here. So we have, Zinfandel Drive is, is running left to right towards the north. And we have Baroque and North Mather running top to bottom on the right side there. The proposed site is at the bottom of this picture. This is, shows the existing median on Zinfandel Drive that would block left turns in and out of the middle and the north driveway. There's the existing path that will remain with a straight path through. And I'm going to show more detail of this picture, but just to give us an understanding of where it's located relative to the site, we have here, this is the location of the signalized intersection and the southernmost driveway. And the, the path will be maintained straight through in its current alignment. Now zooming in to that same picture. Again, north is generally in the same orientation. Towards the right, we're looking at Zinfandel Drive here, and the south is on the bottom of the picture here. The intersection, signalized intersection that we've been talking about is at this location at the south driveway. And the trail is maintained in its current straight alignment through there. To identifying how the signal will work on Zinfandel Drive, it will be re-stripped so that there are three lanes southbound, there will be three lanes northbound. And the existing, the existing median there is a little over 12 feet wide, sufficient for a left turn pocket. So a portion of that median will be removed and replaced to install a left turn pocket that will be utilized for southbound vehicles to access that southernmost intersection. And with that, I'll return to Darcy.
Thank you, Albert. So the relocation of the emergency vehicle access was something that was raised at the last meeting as well as during the community meeting. The applicant stated they, they are amenable to relocating that as long as SAC Metro Fire was okay with relocation of that EVA over to a location off of Ocelot Way. SAC Metro Fire has actually stated that they would prefer a relocation of this EVA. It just meets their criteria. It checks more of their criteria boxes versus the proposed location over off of Baroque. One thing to note is obviously, there hasn't been full design of what this would look like. So generally, we could lose a few of those truck parking stalls in that area. There would obviously, if you look to the screen on the right, the, the current proposal shows a screen wall that extends from the existing screen wall to hide that truck parking area. So there's a few things that would have to be worked out in terms of details if that gets relocated is how we incorporate that screen wall to continually block, block that truck parking. How many of those truck stalls would we potentially lose? Additionally, if it is relocated, we would want to have some sort of pedestrian access still from the project site out to Baroque for pedestrians or people that work at the site pedestrians to be able to get in and out onto Baroque. So this is something that staff is looking for feedback from the council on so that we can direct the applicant whether to keep it in its current location or relocate it. The next few slides, I'll just go through the exhibits that you saw last time fairly quickly, the proposed site plan. Typical building elevations. These elevations have not been modified in terms of the height. The applicant is waiting to get final direction from the council this evening before modifying all of the exhibits to bring back. So while this still shows the old height, the applicant has agreed to reduce the overall height for those corners at 40 and the roofline at 38. But the overall design of the building at this point is remaining the same. Proposed landscape plan, you saw this last time. Again, we'll be looking at modifying this, the eucalyptus and utilizing a different evergreen screen tree and incorporating some taller trees into that buffer. Additional conditions, these next few slides, you have seen some of these conditions at the last meeting. The ones on the right or on the left you did see, which talks about the hours of operation. Incorporating a new sound wall at the end of Dubina Court, which is also a condition on a previous project. The project already designed with skylights, EV charging at the loading docks. And there's also a condition that would require, if there's refrigeration units to be used, loading, or plugs at the loading docks. The bold conditions on the right are new conditions in response to some of the community comments that were provided to the applicant. First one being, there was concerns about rodents based upon the construction that would occur. So they have agreed for pest control being provided during construction at the property lines for rodent control. There was a request that any future changes in terms of color be approved prior to changing that. And the applicant has agreed to that condition. Construction workers will not be permitted to park within the residential neighborhood. There will be no onsite speed bumps. Again, we spoke earlier about the overnight concrete pours would require advanced approval by the city and a 10-day notification to surrounding residents. The applicant has also stated that as part of their operational practice, they have onsite security to monitor empty, to monitor empty buildings for any security reasons. Additionally, these are a lot of the conditions you saw last time that were presented by the Attorney General. These would be part of the conditions of approval and the applicant did agree to these on this particular project. And I'll pass it back to Albert to go over the infrastructure-associated conditions, which you did see last time as well.
Thank you, Darcy. Some of the additional infrastructure conditions of approval include two, install sidewalk on the Zinfandel project frontage. They'll be installing the new signal at the south entrance that we described earlier. The Zinfandel Drive will be striped to six lanes, generally from Spoto Drive south to the city limit, including the transitions. The, there will be, non-passenger and commercial vehicles shall not be permitted to use Baroque Drive or other residential neighborhood roads. And truck right-out movements to Zinfandel Drive shall be contained in the outside lane. And also, separate from this application, staff have begun process to design traffic calming on Baroque that well include neighborhood outreach.
Prior to jumping into the last few slides, I would just like to go over a few of the items that the community requested that the applicant did not agree with. Those were as part of your project as attachment four. But just to go over a few of those items is, the applicant has not agreed to, and this is not inclusive of the entire list. I'm just going to hit the few highlights that we put in the staff report. The applicant has not agreed to installation of triple-pane windows, taller walls along Zinfandel, North Mather and Baroque. Any upgrades to the HVA system or air filter systems within the house. Or lowering the building by excavating out the site and finally, replacement of any pool filters. Again, this is not an all-inclusive list. It's just the few that we highlighted in the staff report that I wanted to just note for the council. In terms of environmental, the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Secret Guideline Section 15183 consistent with a community plan, general plan or zoning. Recommended motion would be staff request that the council receive testimony, continue the public hearing to June 5th, ask any questions, deliberate and provide staff sufficiently detailed direction to return with final hearing documents and/or planned revisions at the June 5th City Council meeting. That concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is here and does have a presentation that he would like to go through.
Okay, questions for staff? Donald? Garrett? Siri? David?
Yeah, I have a question on lighting. Didn't, I don't think it was mentioned in your presentation just now, but was mentioned in the previous meeting. Do we have assurances that lighting will not bleed from this site into the neighborhood?
Yes, so standard conditions of approval that we place on all projects is to meet our lighting standards, which requires them to be down shielded. They will have to meet what the minimum safety requirements are. So at a walkway where a door is, they have a four-foot candle they have to meet. Internally in the parking lot, there's also minimum standards, but at the property line, it's a zero, so that means no spillover. And again, all lights have to be shielded downwards.
They also agreed that they weren't going to light the sign, just that they said they'd do that.
Correct. That was also another item they agreed to know lit signage.
I was at the subcommittee meeting. Yeah. We went, sat with everybody.
And I have a question for Albert. Albert, you said they would complete a seven-foot sidewalk on Zinfandel, and I'm looking at your signal layout, and I'm seeing a pedestrian easement. Does that mean it will be the typical sidewalk separated from Zinfandel with a tree lawn like we have in a lot of Stone Creek? Or will it simply be a square curb with sidewalk adjacent to the roadway?
Roadway. It'll be the first, it'll be a seven-foot detached sidewalk with landscape strip in between the sidewalk and the street.
Great, okay.
Super, thank you.
Albert, are there any traffic restrictions that could be placed on Baroque that would not allow trucks to make that turn?
We have included a condition of approval that does not allow for trucks or other commercial traffic to make that right turn.
Is there any physical barrier we could construct, an island, a pedestrian safety zone, anything like that, that would make it difficult for a truck to make that turn? In other words, a driver, a confused driver of a truck would look at that and say, oh, I don't want to go that way, if they didn't already know they weren't supposed to go that way.
So you're planning speed bumps?
We are looking to traffic calming, which is a broad suite of different tools, and that is certainly one of the tools that we're evaluating as a part of that suite, given the environment, the speed limits on there. So that would certainly be one aspect of the traffic calming project, to make this a street that's more amenable to local residential travel rather than regional commercial travel in addition to the condition of approval that does not allow for trucks. Yes.
I anticipate we will enhance an ordinance about trucks on non-truck routes and the penalties for being off of a truck route. I assume we'll look at cameras and automated systems to record license plates of trucks that violate that ordinance. I assume we'll have enormous fines for trucks that make those sort of violations. I assume we'll make property owners or businesses liable for the operations of trucks that are operating to and from their facilities that violate those sorts of rules. I don't know which of these is legal yet or exactly what it is, but I want to be sure that physically, we make it as difficult as possible for a truck to enter into a residential street.
And Albert, to his credit, has been working on this for about six months because we have a historic problem with people, commuters, coming northbound on Zinfandel and using Baroque to get to destinations off of Kilburg. That's been a problem for, ever since Zinfandel went through to Douglas. So that's why they've been working on it for quite some time now.
Mayor Bage, could I also just add to that? I was going to provide some additional clarification, is there were various comments that were raised about traffic and enforcement and fines and potentially off-site cameras, and that is something that will be the city's responsibility. So we will be looking into different programs and how to enforce that for the long term.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, Darcy.
Well, guys, we also looked at the pads to shift and make that light turn when adults come out, when the cars come out, so that would turn, you know, we talked about the street light we talked about. So we looked into that idea, and that's, a lot of this is going to be covered by the city, and if it's covered by the city, it's not covered by the person, but it'll be covered by us. So a lot of this will be us putting in the extra lights, the speed bumps, the cameras, the extra enforcement, the cops, and all that stuff.
So you said the applicant has a presentation?
Yes.
Oh, there we go. Good evening, George Condon, Derby Properties. Thank you. I actually didn't realize staff was going to do such a thorough presentation, so I'll race through this here pretty quickly. This is similar to the, thank you. This is similar to the last presentation you saw on this project. There's been just a few changes that I think are noteworthy. Again, you've seen this slide, that's the flight path. This is the previously approved project, I've talked about this before. This is an antiquated design with truck docks facing the homes on Baroque. Here, we just went ahead and measured the distances that that design created between the homes on Baroque and the beginning of the truck court. So you can see the greatest one is almost 364 feet, and it goes down to 190 feet at the closest point. Again, we all are aware of this, but we are taking all of our traffic off of Baroque, so that's 1,865 cars and trucks that are being taken off of Baroque Drive and moved to our signalized entry. And then, this is our project design, which you've all seen. I don't think you've seen this slide, though. We've measured the distances from the truck court to the homes, and so you can see that they've more than doubled. Yeah, well, anyway, you see the differences. So 652, 614, 511. So not only are the truck courts further from the homes, but the truck courts are sandwiched between the buildings. Those buildings will act as a very robust sound buffer. The cities, as you all know, the city's noise ordinance standard is 45 decibels. The current acoustical study that you all have shows a predicted level of 36 decibels from this project. We need the acoustical engineer to update that study. It will only get better because when he did this study, it did not include any of the sound walls that have since been added to the design. Screen walls, I guess, is maybe what might resonate more. I'll skip this slide. This is the old design, there's some comments that this design is better than our current design, that it looks more like an office. I think the exact opposite is true. We've gone to great pains to create that two-story element that everyone has asked for. You can see a clear separation in the design between the base level and the second level. You see the addition of windows, you see the addition of awnings over the windows. It's a very attractive design personally, but again, it's focused on creating that two-story feel that council has asked for on the Bear Hollow project. Other view of the entry, and then just more views of the project at various stages of landscaping maturity. I think this is also a very telling slide here, and one of the reasons why I don't think a screen wall is a good idea, there's many reasons why it's not a good idea, but the project is set back so far that at maturity, the trees provide a very good filter of your views of the building, a building that is much more attractive than a screen wall. And then I thought this was interesting, this is an old one, you've seen this before, but one of your now-retired planners took these pictures. The first one, the top one, is from when the trees were planted along Baroque in 2019, and then the next one is in 2022, and I was impressed with the amount of growth that you see in those trees there. And lastly, the landscaping plan, which you've seen, and I think we can skip that slide. Would you like me to stay for any questions?
Questions for the developer, Donald? Siri?
Yeah, thank you so much for all the modifications you've made, I really appreciate it. Can I request or ask if you're open to the addition of air filters in double-pane windows? Is that a hard no? And please really think about before you answer.
Well, I'm hesitating because I failed to mention one thing. So on this project, we have not agreed to restricting the hours of operation. So that is an incorrect entry in staff's presentation. So, and as far as...
George, are you talking about overnight?
Yeah, the zoning does not require any restrictions on hours of operation, and so we're not adding it to this project.
Well, this one's closer. Anything else, Siri?
The second part of my question is, are you open to considering the request that the residents have put on air filters and double-pane windows?
We're open to considering it, but don't take that as an agreement to do so. We're happy to have that discussion. Yes, does that, are we in agreement? Thank you.
David, questions?
How did it get into this document this far without you agreeing to it?
Darcy and I clearly have a communication mistake, so...
Why would you allow that restriction on the other site and not here?
I haven't compared the acoustic study to the, between the two sites. We actually, as you'll recall, were pushed into agreeing to those limitations on the Bear Hollow project. We regret doing that, it's not good for our business, and we prefer not to make that mistake again.
Well, clearly, it's only business that matters. Neighborhood, you don't appear to give a damn about.
No, that's incorrect. That's not a fair statement. So if you look at the acoustical...
Guys, I know you feel strongly, but let's let him finish.
If you look at the acoustical study, you'll see that we're well below the city's standards, and so that was the motivation for the decision.
The result of that decision is all-night noise for residents.
I would just recommend you review the acoustical study. It's very detailed.
Anything else? So, George, I agree with you about the changes to the design. What we're seeing here is much more like an office building, but I've got three different versions of color. And I care about color. And it would, the lighter, the better.
Yeah, the one in the presentation I just showed is to address the comments around creating a color palette that's more in keeping with the surrounding neighborhood. And so that's the one we're putting forward today. We're open to a different color palette if that's what council decides.
Okay. All right. So Garrett, you, Garrett was out of the room, so Garrett...
Sure, but we still have a follow-up to what David just brought up that I don't want to move on from. Why does our staff think that that was in the agreement?
That condition was actually presented in the April 17th list of conditions of approval as well. If we were to pull up the presentation, slide number 14 had what we had previously looked at on the left side on the 14th or on the 17th, and the bold were the new ones. And that's the same condition we put on Logistics Center, and we brought it up on April 17th to prevent all onsite truck movements between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM.
And there was not pushback?
There was not pushback from the April 17th presentation.
Okay. Garrett, you were out of the room, did you have questions for the applicant?
Yeah, Wendy, can we go back to a slide?
Which slide?
The slide that this gentleman brought in. Yeah, just the one about that looks like the forest in Narnia. I was just wondering when that amazing forest should be there, because I'm pretty sure I saw an animal running through it, some sort of, like bear. Like, I was, I'm shocked that it's going to be at that level. When do we get that amazingness? Is that 20, 40, 200 years? What are we thinking, guys?
Actually, Garrett, there is a landscape plan.
Yeah, but let's go back, right there, we almost had it. Go back, go back, go back, go back, go back. This, no, no, almost there, so close. Back one more. With the forest. Come on now, guys, help me out here. Hurting me. Oh, no, no, no. That! What are you guys complaining about? Look at the forest you're about to get. I can't even see the warehouses. Listen, listen. That's funny. That was good. That was good. That was good. You know, the problem is, one, we're already a little angry, and we were already saddened by this, but if we could have something like this, I don't, you know, I have trouble stopping. I'm pretty sure there's a lake back there that you guys just aren't seeing next to the amazing, amazing warehouse. Did you just say mosquito? Stop that. Just so you guys know, he did agree to not have the lights up high. So also, if that was one of your questions, I want you to know that, because I know, I didn't prepare the presentation, but no, but she, we specifically had questions, that they wanted to know if they were going to drop it down low, and so they are going to drop it down low, because we do know that the bold beauty looks like a firelight in the middle at night, which I thought was funny. They have also agreed that they're not 100% sold on having all mega lights out there, guys, so we can go talk about bold and beauty, just FYI, they're pretty amenable as a tenant, at least the new people that are moving in, because the old people are leaving. And then, what other things did I have for you? So you're not going to agree to the timing, and, oh, they did agree to do the, catch the varmints and stuff. So they are going to prep the pesticides and stop the, your new...
That's in Darcy's list.
I know, but I'm just telling them, because the community, did you already tell them the voles? They're going to get the voles? And the rabbits? And the fairies that live in this forest? Yeah, and then, yeah, okay, well, you know, there's nothing we can do about that. All right, that was my only question.
All right, thank you, George. So, we go to public comment?
That was better.
We'll start with the speaker cards that I have received. Paul Carroll will be first. Following Paul will be Mark Bonatata, Sarah Malone, Eric Weiniger, Marilyn Metzger.
Oh, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Such a privilege to be up here again. I'd like to call your attention to public comments that Mark Barry sent you today, and just read a couple excerpts from that, because I think that letter offers perhaps a way for us as citizens to be satisfied that in fact, this whole issue of the life of the DA has been satisfied. And the life of the DA is as critical in this project, to Donald's question of whether I'm appropriate to the agenda, as it is to the Logistics Center. Mr. Barry states, "It's concerning the city may act imprudently and potentially without determining if it has proper legal authority." And he calls for a petition for declaratory relief in California to obtain a judicial declaration on the rights and duties of the parties under the contract. He goes on to say that what you've gotten so far is dueling opinions of lawyers. You've not gotten the law, that you only get the law if you go to declaratory relief and take it before a judge presenting both sides of the issue. Before taking any action, you should seek that declaratory relief to find, to be sure that you have the legal authority to take the actions that you're stating. And Dermati relies on the validity of the DA and threatens legal action on its basis. And parties cannot carry out provisions of a contract that violates state statutes. Such agreements are void. So why consider these acts if they will be illegal and voided by a judicial decision? At the same time, you could raise the issue of the threats of damages, which are contrary to the language of the DA, Section 6.4 cumulative remedies, which provide only for equitable relief and not monetary damages. As you've said, you have talked to three different lawyers, they have offered the perspective that what you are doing is in fact legal. Why not take the extra step of doing judicial relief, have that confirmed, and all of our arguments, supported by our attorney, go away? So the prudent course at this moment would be to file the declaratory relief so the city can be assured of the law, and it would provide all parties with a legal certainty. And it would provide all parties with the legal certainty that they seek in this matter. I hope you read Mark Berry's letter in its entirety. He goes into much greater detail around this. And I thank him for his thoughtful review grounded in legal fact. And I thank you for your attention to this.
Thank you, Paul. Mark, I didn't catch the last name. Mark?
Hi, I'm Mark Bonatata. I live in Stone Creek.
Uh, Mark, say that again?
Mark Bonatata.
Bonatata.
Yes. You did address the Swenson Hawk, but I want to make one reference to that. In Bio Resources in the SPA, page 10, number 30, the Swenson Hawk, they must be done within 10 miles of this project. Elliot Homes, I believe, where they have their property that they're trying to put all it, is way more than 10 miles from this project. So, they must go find 42 acres within 10 miles of this project to satisfy that clause. So, please make sure that that is within 10 miles. On another note, everyone's been talking CEQA, but I want to turn our attention to 4.3 of the DA. Paragraph 2. "The county further agrees to cooperate with developer in securing all permits, licenses, approvals, consents, which may be required by other agencies having jurisdiction over the property. In the event state or federal laws or regulations enacted after the effective date of this agreement or formal action of any government jurisdiction, other than the county, prevent compliance with one or more provisions of this agreement or require changes in plans, maps, permits approved by the county. The parties agree the provisions of this agreement shall be modified, extended, or suspended only to the minimum extent necessary to comply with each, with such state or federal laws or regulations or the regulations of other government jurisdictions other than the county." Now, he wants to use this agreement. You're going to tell me in 20 years, there's been no new laws? You agree to work with him on this. That's what it states right here. You'll work with him in compliance with all these laws. But yet, I haven't heard anyone talk about 4.3. All I hear is from the attorneys, CEQA, doesn't apply. This is not CEQA. I want an answer to 4.3, paragraph 2. I think the rest of us want to know what that means. It states here that if there are changes to state laws and regulations, you need to work on it and come up with a solution. It's not exempt. So, I don't know how planning this bypassed them or the rest of the city council here. I really don't understand the way the city does business. First of all, all this should be done in a planning commission meeting and not at a city council meeting. We shouldn't be at this point, at this point in the project. So, I would like to hear about 4.3. Oh, and since I have a few seconds, who was here in 2016 to vote on the extension of the agreement in the council members? Any of you? So, three of them. Guess that's how we know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Sarah?
I'm tired. Hungry and tired. Okay. I have a random list of the things that were approved or not approved by the developer with comments to go along with those. One of the things we requested was no fuel refilling whatsoever on this property due to the close proximity to homes in the flyover zone. This was not included and needs to be. The project is less than 300 feet from some of our homes. And I'm talking about the buildings, not what he wants to portray, which is not the buildings. He wants to talk about the driveways and where the trucks come in. But the buildings are less than 300 feet from some of our homes. We do not want trucks being refueled at this facility. This is currently happening at Bold and Beauty. Fuel truck goes in there almost nightly. It's very dangerous. It's in the fly zone. Green walls on warehouse wall and sound wall along Baroque. They state, "The proposal already utilizes trellises." More will come up on this, but trellises are not green walls. This response is inadequate. Project phasing. If phased, the applicant proposes to construct buildings fronting Baroque to provide a barrier between the project and the homes along Baroque. Then they state, "Four warehouse office buildings, so many square feet, will be built in two phases." So, which is it? Will it be phased or will it not be phased? If it is phased, the residents request that the buildings to the back be built first in case they sit empty for years and are not filled. Then we don't have the ones built in the front eventually and hopefully. Policing empty warehouses. Dermody contracts with security service to monitor all projects. The residents asked for security 24/7, both during construction and during operation, not just when the warehouses were empty. Rodent control traps along just Baroque are not going to cut it. That's what they propose. They will need a pest abatement company to service the site. There are also several comments regarding enforcement of noise trucks, parking, et cetera. These are items that the city will be responsible for implementing and enforcing. Well, we see how well that's working with the Bold and Beauty warehouse because there's no enforcement whatsoever. So, I'd like that to be in writing, written into the resolution for approval or conditions of improvement. The residents of Dubina Way have asked for two things. One was addressed in this, the sound wall. But the residents along Dubina that front Zinfandel have requested a sound wall. I don't know if you've seen the one on Hazel Avenue. We've referred to that several times. Their backyards back right up onto Zinfandel, and now you're going to make that six lanes. That's going to be right in their backyards. So, more, a higher sound wall is needed.
Please wrap up your comments.
And, let's see here.
Thank you, Sarah.
Okay. Thank you. I'll send these other ones in.
Hey, Sarah, one sec. Okay, so, let me ask you this. You know, if we don't put... If they built this thing and they don't do the gas trucks, then that means it's going to double the amount of truck rides because they have to go fuel. Would you prefer more trucks, trips? Or would you prefer them staying there and only one truck to come to gas it?
Well, I'd prefer that they fuel up before they come in.
Okay. And then, what was it? You had... What was number three? You said there was one, the gas trip one?
The phasing?
Yes, okay. So, here's the deal with the phasing. So, usually, you build in the front because you don't want the dirt and stuff to kick up in the side.
We understand that, yeah.
Okay. Just making sure. I'm like, I want, you know, because I was in this...
It's a mixed bag.
It's a mixed bag. You know, you don't want it, right?
Right.
But we also, if we're going to kick up all the dirt and grime and grump, I don't want... I wanted something to block it. And usually, what you do is you build the buildings in the front to block the dirt, the grime, and the bugs from coming into the community because there's walls there, but...
Yeah. I get that, you know, and it is. It's a mixed bag. You don't know if the buildings are going to fill up and if they're going to continue and build four buildings.
Right.
You know, so...
Okay.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Eric?
Well, it's deja vu all over again, isn't it? This project has almost identical issues as Logistics Center is, has, obviously. Just the location's just a little bit different. And there... But there are more receptors that are closer, except for the school, sensitive receptors over at Stone Creek Industrial, which, for some reason, has been renamed more euphemistically as Stone Creek Business. Don't know about that. But to address some of the comments, like Mr. Mark said about laws and CEQA exemption, I urge you to read my submission that I provided today. 15 pages of analysis on PM 2.5, the evolution of the science and the regulatory environment around that. I did a literature search and two sources, looking at the number of scientific references to PM 2.5 and health over different periods of time. Pre-1998, 1999, there were 5,000 citations of PM 2.5 and health. Between 1999 and 2022, there were 72,000 references. Now, if that doesn't constitute new and significant substantial information from that first EIR, then I don't know what does. So, but to go further, if you look at the content of those scientific papers, in 1999, the National Academy of Sciences set forth some research priorities, and I talk about this in the paper, where they were laying out what are the issues? The science at that time was looking at associate... Association between like hospital admissions and PM 2.5 concentrations that were measured. And one of the priorities that the National Academy has decided on was to look at, well, what are the mechanisms that are causing those physiological differences that cause adverse health effects? Well, that's exactly what has happened. In the last 10 to 15 years, there have been a spate of research that has gone directly into mechanisms of health impacts from PM 2.5 and the chemical composition of those aerosols. This is new science. And the science is what is based, what the regulations are based on. Since 1998, there have been six revisions of the PM 2.5 regulation. Most of them are related to increases in the knowledge related to the health effects. And in fact, currently, there is a new version of the PM 2.5 standard to lower it because of, again, that new science that understands that lower concentrations do cause adverse health effects. So, I have to think about the GLP CEQA exemption that went through in 2020 without anybody really realizing it. As who was the first person who said, "Yeah, this thing is exempt?" Because it just seems like it flowed through so easily. And so, when I talk about the looking at things with a skeptical eye, it's like if someone says this is exempt, someone else has to ask, "Why do you think that?"
Please wrap up your comments.
A little bit more detail about it. So, take a skeptical view of things, look at it deeply, and then we'll see some better answers.
Thank you, Eric. Marilyn?
Following Marilyn will be James Garcia, Valerie Knipstchild, Jennifer Garcia.
I swear, being here is like being gaslighted for a couple hours at a time. You think you know what you're hearing. You think you know what you're reading. You think you know what you're being presented. This was shocking to see that it's Stone Creek Business Park. Is that to take the industrial term out of the title of this complex now? To change...
Everything we've got says Industrial Center.
It's from you guys. Business park.
That came from him. That came from the applicant. That's not what the city's calling it.
What a shock. What a shock. This is the same man that did not complete an environmental questionnaire by himself or accurately or with any sense of caring what the data he was putting on there was. And he came up and lied to you guys that he did do it, and we know he didn't. The other point I want to bring up is if I needed an attorney and I needed to be defended against something, I wouldn't go to a prosecuting attorney to help me find one. You have gone to a defender of developers and asked to get an attorney that is going to be on the side of protection and environmental and protecting of the health of the people in this town. Where did you think he was going to send you? Not to a defense attorney. That's not going to happen. And back to the traffic signal. Semis are 65 feet long. They're usually between eight and 12 feet wide. How many are going to fit in a 300-foot left-hand turn lane? Every car, every truck coming from north... Coming from the north, coming from 50, has to turn left into this project. There is no other entrance. There are 600 parking places for cars. And let's not get confused. Those are not truck parking spaces. Those are trailer parking places. There is no accommodation there. Just like there is no accommodation for truck parking on Bold Beauty because nobody even thought to think about it because you didn't know it was needed. It's just frustrating to be 72 years old and fighting this crap at the last house I thought I was ever going to live in, the neighborhood that I've actually loved the most because I got to ride my bike, I got to walk, I had nice green belts to ride around on, and instead, I got to move. There's no way in hell I'm going to stay here and ruin my health and die earlier than I have to because I can't live outside. Because I live outside. My office is in my garage with my garage door open. That's where I put all my Pilates classes together. That's where I do all my business. I'm not going to be able to open my windows. The noise, we get the beep-beep-beeps and all the other stuff already.
Please wrap up your comments.
How many left-hand turn lanes are we going to have to listen to? And again, I go back. I have watched trucks go up, turn around at the fire training center, and come back. You think that's not going to happen with the cars that are trying to get into work?
Thank you, Marilyn.
And they can't do the left? And the other thing is they also turn into the driveway on the right of Bold Beauty. Semis go into that driveway and maneuver their way around.
That may speak tough. James?
Another one. Once again, I'm here to oppose the proposed development for the Stone Creek Industrial project. I'm opposed to this project for the same reasons. Once again, development agreement is invalid and expired as of July 1, 2018 at the latest per state government code regarding development agreements. All of the documents state that. That they agree to follow state statute. Two, the design does not meet the requirements for size and scale of the neighborhood. Once again, 64 to 1. That to a real car outside. Go take a look. Which one do you want to drive in? That or the other one? Well, I don't want to drive in a big humongous warehouse. There are homes. They're even closer than the Logist Center project at this point in time. And there's four of them, not just one. Proper CEQA review needs to be done because, again, substantial new information not addressed in the EIR nor supplemental EIR. Again, use your policing powers as it pertains to the government code, section 65865.3B. The city may modify or suspend it. Again, four, dangerous to their health or safety or both. You know the drill. To properly determine the health risk. Five, I pointed out earlier in the general public comment period that the city isn't... If the city had done its due diligence, actively followed the law, performed the annual reviews, these developments could have been prevented from a lack of good faith dealings to have properly built prior to the expiration date of the development agreement in July 1 of 2018 at the longest or gone through the termination process for lack of good faith dealings to have the area finished. One other nice note is Dermody did not receive a letter. Elliot Homes did in 2022. As an actual owner, invested rights according to your planning department. Why did Dermody not? They were given rights and assumptions for the development agreement. They don't have it in the planning commission's eyes because they would have sent him a letter to actually do their compliance review. Another thing, the state understands the health risks from vehicles and has such taken the steps to protect its workers. This is now prevalent at our Bay Area toll booths. No more payment collector workers. They know the health risk of all of this. Use that to deny this for health and safety. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Valerie?
Good evening.
Welcome, Valerie.
Councilpeople and city staff. I have... I own a home at 3581 Dubina Court in Rancho Cudova. We bought the home June 1, 2011. The house was built by irreparable home builder Elliot Homes in 2006. I retired December 31, 2004 from the state of California with 37.7 years. I was a dedicated employee, received several awards for saving the state money for excelling in my career and receiving a certificate for being faithful in service and recognition of my 25, first 25 years of employment. I bought this home to retire. Since my retirement, the last eight... Since I retired, the last eight years up to... Since... Since... Since my retirement, the last eight years up until April of 2022 have been marvelous. We were traveling the northwest and southwest to visit national parks, traveled to Hawaii, to Haiti, and Canada with a couple cruises. We remodeled the kitchen. We had two grandchildren who come into our life and have been taking... We take them camping. April 22nd, 2022, April 2022. Through that current year, our world came to a... Through that current year, our world came to a stop. Every day from April 22nd, 2022, not one day has passed that the word warehouse has been brought up in a conversation. It has, it has been the worst year of my 69 years of life. I have survived deaths, in-law, deaths of parents, in-laws, grandparents, and ex-spouse, bankruptcy, divorce, being a single parent, paying college tuition for two children and myself. Surviving not one but seven warehouses and 800 trucks are proposed for this community does not look possible. Why would anyone even think to put a warehouse 300 feet from your residence? Use common sense. It's like the tall guy who sits in front of you in the movie. Common sense, you would look around and respect the people around you. In my 37 years of life, I've traveled downtown every day before light rail came in by vehicle and car pulls. It wasn't until my last seven years I rode my bike and took my, took the light rail. Making an employment center, as you're calling them now, 300 feet from your residence is not that, is not all that. You will find the employment center may have many more outsiders employed at the facilities than the local residents, especially if the starting wage is $18 an hour. Many of the people in Stone Creek are retired or just starting a family. To own a $750,000 home and working at an employment center will not allow you to afford these homes in that area. Rethink this decision. To approve the warehouse, use-
Please wrap up your comments.
Use common sense. The developers need to build near the light rails and not near the residential homes.
Thank you, Valerie. Jennifer?
Take in a minute. Evening again, Jennifer Garcia, Stone Creek resident. I'm just going to point out a couple of things here. If you guys are really with us and support us, I hope you go back to Dermody and insist on a couple of conditions. One, no overnight concrete pours. All of us have jobs. Many of us have kids. Our next-door neighbor is going to have a newborn during this phase. We literally back up right to this project. From my house to the property, it's going to be 300 feet roughly. They're not going to comply with giving us new triple-pane windows and stuff. They need to have some conditions of absolutely no overnight work. There needs to be no overnight, anything going on there after the warehouses are built. We do sleep, we have jobs, we have kids, we live there. You need to insist on some conditions here. Also, the trucks already go down Baroque. I don't know if you guys are familiar with this. They already go up and down. I sit there and watch them out of my window all, all day long, all night long. We'll be sitting in our backyard and seeing them leave. I don't, I'm sure how many of you have actually been to the property and stood at the property. I know, Linda, you're familiar with the area. I'm not sure about the other council members, if you have actually gone there, but that property level already sits higher than the street by probably three, four feet. We need to insist they dig down and build at street level because building higher and having it two-story and having windows, those lights are going to shine in our backyards. I'm sorry, I'm just so upset about this. I'm trying to stay composed here. And I also want to insist that you can put office-looking windows up, but on the second story, they need to be fake windows and not real windows because those of us who do back up to Baroque, that is going to invade our privacy. If you have somebody that is on a scaffold or something with inside the warehouse, they're going to see into my backyard. I have children. I have a backyard that has a pool. I want my privacy. I deserve to have my privacy as a resident there. Also, I would insist that you do not put any speed bumps going down Baroque. I'm not sure if you're familiar, but Mitchell Middle School and Mitchell High School have a bus stop right across from where the proposed, original proposed emergency access is. It stops there four times a day. Are you going to make our school go in to a different direction, a different route? What are those kids that are going to Mitchell Middle School and Cordova High supposed to do there? I'm just looking at my notes. I think that's it. But the other last thing I want to point out, I know Dermody is lawyer, is Star Miller, and I'm not sure if you guys had a chance to read Gloria's letter, but it cites on there on page six and seven that she sent in today-
Please wrap up your comments.
That they literally wrote the book and the law on treason, treason, I can't say it correctly, that support the residents and what we are going through, and you should read it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
The next speaker will be Kim Schuster. Following Kim will be Helen Wayland-Bishaw, Troy Fennell, Barbara Augustin.
Which mic is it? Is it this one?
Either one.
Either one. Okay, perfect. This one's shorter. Hi all, thank you all for having me. Thank you, councilmembers, mayor. So my concern actually mimics a lot of Sarah Malone's that she already mentioned, but I'll bring them up again because I think they're important. I want to thank you all. I mean, I'm glad to see the EV infrastructure, that's exciting, taller trees, these are all really good things. And some of our concerns, I've heard other people sitting around me like, oh, I brought that in, I brought that in. So that was really cool to hear. So I love all those pieces. Kind of echoing Sarah's concern as far as the decorative screen walls. So those are not the same as like living green wall. Decorative screen walls are kind of like, like trellises, you know, kind of like just the outline, and then vines usually go up of it. And usually that takes a lot of time for it to grow all the way up and doesn't provide the same benefits as a living green wall. So living green walls, some of the benefits which will be really beneficial is reducing air pollution, reducing sound pollution, even providing wildlife habitats for displaced species like the hawk, you know, things like that. And also, I mean, for the developer, I mean, like improved insulation, so could be one for them. But overall, I think this would be a really good thing to have for all of those reasons and more, just given the research has already based there. But again, building a living green wall does require a lot more cost, right? Because you're putting in boldly grown plants. You're not waiting all this time for it to mature, waiting for it to come to Armenia. It's going to be there already. And I think it's a really great, modern thing that we could implement, and I definitely encourage to be going forward. So that's my main one. For the last part is in regards to the acoustical study. As I brought up last time, again, the numbers were based on very, very, many, many years ago kind of study thing. And one of the things that stood out to me at that time and are still standing out to me is that the study was looking at, oh, at the least, like at the quietest, it's going to be this. And it's like, well, we should look at the loudest as well. Let's look at both. And so I'm looking forward to a new, more accurate, more updated study that includes, you know, quietest, sure, and also at its loudest as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Helen Wayland-Bishaw?
Welcome, Helen.
Hello, thank you for having me here again. I'm going to cap on a few things I saw on the slides and a few comments people have made. First off, we're replacing eucalyptus trees with evergreens. Has anybody looked at the trade-off for reduction in carbon with the kind of trees we're replacing? Also, is depending on the tree you build, if anybody's familiar with the entrance into Riverbend Park, I have pictures in, in the 80s when they were just sticks. The trees were sticks. It took 20 years for those trees to grow, at least 20 years. And we're talking about sturdy trees like oaks and some eucalyptus, and there are a few walnut trees because the walnut was a tree in the area at the time because of the orchard. So when you start talking about how fast trees are going to grow, the life expectancy of a tree that grows fast is less than a tree that grows slow. You also have to look at the subterranean soil. Will it support that tree? Another thing we talked about was a green wall. Green walls are pretty, but they're hard to maintain. You get a cold freeze in or you get an infestation of some kind of beetle on those things, they go. So you've got nothing but exposed wire. We are looking at, they have a flat roof. What ordinance do we have that they're not down the road going to want to put solar panels on there? That adds to the elevation of the roof. What about the fact that I see some of the businesses in the area have taken out trees and put in sewer fields? So once we put the sewer fields in, it's great for their energy efficiency and reduction of the use of electricity during prime time. However, we do not, we take away the efficiency or the effect of trees with the, with carbon. So I think you need to look at that. And then as far as catching vermin, the bawled eagle is a prime example of pesticides. The bawled eagles went on the endangered species list because their eggs got so fragile that the weight of the bawled eagle was killing the babies in the eggs. So you start using pesticides or poisons to kill the vermin, you're now moving it into the ecological system. And I'm not a tree hugger, I'm just being realistic about this because when you start to affect the environment, you're putting an additional cost on the public to have to correct it down the road. The bawled eagle was a very expensive thing. The bird for California, the conure, the conure is another example of a very costly subject to correct what the humans did by toxin waste and stuff. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen.
Troy Fennell? Welcome, Troy.
So to address the design review this time, going back to the slides that were presented earlier this evening, if you look at Zenfandel coming down to Baroque, the light where the fire training area is and the southernmost portion of the property is elevated quite significantly from Baroque. With James's Hot Wheels illustration, the size and the scope of this project does not fit into a residential area. 164th. A passenger car weighs approximately two tons. A semi-truck weighs approximately 40 tons. A passenger car under ideal stopping situation at 40 miles an hour is 124 feet. At 55 miles an hour, it's 225 feet. A semi is 169 feet at 40 miles an hour and 335 feet at 55 miles an hour. Now, the last time I was driving on Zenfandel, I, I enter Zenfandel at Tintafina. It is a relatively blind corner, and I frequently have cars zipping down because they're late for work at 60-plus miles an hour. So having a diesel invade that, that traffic pattern on a downhill slope is going to take more than those ideal stopping conditions. The only three entrances into that area are Zenfandel. Correctly so, because we do not want anything on Baroque. Our traffic is not designed to handle that capacity. This is a design review. Look at the design and the intended purpose for what it's, it's designed to meet, and it does not suit us. You can talk about colors and elevations, that's just the color of the lipstick on the pig. We're not addressing the pig. The problem is it is going to be another trucking industrial area that's going to have negative impacts on our neighborhoods, on the safety of the residents, on the taxes because it's going to cause an increase in accidents, it's going to put lives at risk, it's going to increase the traffic congestion flowing up and down Zenfandel, both directions as trucks come in and go out, as frustrated workers try to get in and they're stuck behind a barricade of trucks, and they're flipping U-turns, doing violations on Baroque, doing all of these other magical things that are going to be banned, but you can't enforce it. We already know that Baroque is being abused, that we have trucks going the wrong way-
Wrap up your comments.
Trucks going the wrong way into Bold and Beautiful. It's only going to be compounded with the, the project on Bear Hollow and then now with this beast. Please, stop the nonsense.
Thank you, Troy.
Brenda Augustin?
Brenda.
So as Troy just talked about, it seems that a design review does, and you've elicited that in your reviews, it does include traffic, noise, and the environment. So seeing this depiction of maturity of these trees that doesn't look like true to nature of what it's really going to be, I would ask the city to ask the developer to put something in that's, that's realistic in their presentation, and I would ask that the city do the same because the photograph showing the river and people on it has nothing to do with this particular project. It's a different location. And that brings me to the main thing of the development agreement. What are the typical hours of operation for a business and professional building versus a warehouse that is run 24/7? Most business and professional buildings are not run that way. I'm curious, this developer, Dermody, tonight, they're even titling it a business park. So what are the zoning requirements for a business park and hours of operation? You know, like, let's address it and be really specific because they're being specific as well. So how can we find those areas in between and help support the residents? So I'm curious about what's going to transpire between now and the final public hearing on June 5th for plan revisions. Will the city research Mark Berry's data regarding a petition for declaratory relief and report the findings at that meeting? Can communication between the city and the city's, the citizen's attorney occur? I know there are parameters, but the city must follow, that the city must follow to protect the, the city. However, what legal counsel can advise how to protect the residents of Stone Creek and the probable health and safety concerns? Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda.
Those are all the speaker cards that I have. Are there any hands that are raised? I don't see any hands that are raised in Zoom. Is there anybody from the public who would like to speak via Zoom?
Okay, so we're going to continue the-
Mayor Budge, I just want to acknowledge those that sent emails.
Oh, yes, sorry. Go ahead.
So we have a few members of the public who also sent in emails for this item 11.2. Those have been distributed to the city council, they've been placed on the website, and they are placed in the binder in the back of the council chambers. Sarah Malone, Mark Berry, Valerie Knipstchild, Lisa Burns, Brenda Augustin, Jennifer Garcia, James Garcia, Dawn Davison, Brad Sivov, and Jasmine Kettle, Marilyn Metzger, Dee Edgren, and Frank Hall.
Super. Thank you, excuse me, thank you, Stacy. We're keeping the public hearing open and anticipating we will continue this to another discussion, obviously. Does anybody have any additional questions? If not, I have one for staff. You indicate that while the total warehouse buildings are 602,004 feet, about 20% of them is actually going to be used for office space. So I, in the big plans, I don't find any interiors yet. Do we know what the, I mean, for instance, it would be logical that the office space would be on the office side of the building, not on the warehouse side of the building?
Yes, Mayor Budge, that would be correct in terms of where each tenant might have an office space located. It'd probably be closer to the entrance features of the building that you see, but we don't have specific final, like tenant improvement floor layouts to know exactly where those would be located.
Okay. All right. So we need to, we need to provide some direction to staff, and I suspect the number one item on the list, David, would be the hours of operation overnight.
That would be for me.
I would agree with that.
I have other comments, but-
Yeah. So in terms of making a list, that would be number one on our list. Okay. Yeah. So, in terms of making a list, that would be number one on our list. Okay. Donald, you want to start?
I would ask staff to look a little bit closer into the sound wall versus earthen wall and living wall concepts. There were a lot of good comments made tonight about alternatives, but I would probably back away to my colleagues that were on the committee that looked at a handful of these because, you know, like, the idea of building the building in the back first or the building in the front first and the trade-offs that it has from an air quality standpoint make a lot of sense, but also, if you don't end up building the rest of it, although this is spec building, so the odds that they're not going to build it, even if they don't have tenants yet, I would say that the odds that they're not going to build the building in the front if you start in the back are, don't seem very likely. I'd want staff to study a little bit more the issues that were raised around the decline, the grade down from the top of Zinfandel down to the bottom of the, to the intersection and what other safety measures could be put in place. I know we've done a lot of building of bigger, like, corners and bulbouts and things like that for pedestrians that might be waiting at that corner or people on bikes. The comment made about the grade level from the street of Baroque to the property is a four-foot difference, if there is a way to bring the grading down to that. I think the folks, there were comments, I know that were claiming things like, because of that height difference that the lights would not be, the light shading would not be adequate to prevent lights from shining into backyards. I think that's been addressed, but I'd like that to be cleared up by the next meeting. I mean, if at all possible, when we're talking about grading of it, because there is a significant slope to this entire thing all the way up to becoming equal with the Fire Training Center, is if that entire area can be graded to be at the same level with retaining wall or something that basically has a steep drop from the top to the bottom in the back of the property to where everything is at grade, so that we don't have this sliding scale of the stuff in the back is 10 feet or 12 feet or 15 feet higher than the ones in the front. And again, I don't know if I've heard that be addressed, but I think it lasts difference because the city owns a plot of land south into the west of this property that, correct me if I'm wrong, Albert, what is it, 30 feet between the base there at what would be Baroque up to the top, I mean, roughly. So, I hope that this property isn't being thought of to be on a grade from the back to the front and have a significant higher back to it. I think that's all I can think of at the moment. I would say about the comments around solar panels would be a building permit request to do at a later date, and I wouldn't be open to a taller building. So, if that came before me, I'd vote no. And I don't think we're obligated to allow them to do that. But I'd like to make sure that we understand that. But if somebody's going to go in and add four feet more, five feet more of solar panels on top of a 50-foot building, that is not acceptable. And if we're allowed to prevent it, I would want to. I think that's all I can think of at the moment.
Garrett.
So, that left turn is going to be horrible. So, let's just accept that. You've brought it up many times, and let me just tell you, it's going to be, well, six to 10 trucks. In my, I ran a commodities trading firm, so I know what big rigs and what this is. It's going to be down all the way to Bear Hollow. I'll pass that all the way by the school or by that street when it starts to line up. And that left turn, right turn in the morning is going to be atrocious. Let's just accept that. And because truck drivers are not stupid and smart people, they're going to go out, go over by Anatolia, loop around, because they know a right turn is faster than a left, come around there, come around that community, go past Mather, up around and in that way so that they can make a right turn, because two rights are faster than one left waiting as the road gets stuck. So, you guys have seen what it looks like when you try to get on 50 and you're turning every day when that, before COVID hit, and then all of a sudden, traffic disappeared, which was amazing. But that's going to be, it's going to be terrible. There's nothing we can do about it because they're putting warehouses next to residential on a left turn. And honestly, there's nothing, I mean, we could make them not be able to make a left turn. That's another thing to think about and say, like, the only thing, you can't make a left turn there, you have to go make a right turn and go pop around. But then we're just pushing the traffic around in a big old circle, and I don't know if we want that. We'd have to have a traffic study. And Albert, just musing, can I at least know what that would look like or require? If I, can we stop that and what that would do for the traffic? I don't know if we even want to. Next thing, I'd love the idea of lowering it down, but I don't think that's doable. But I would love if we actually did that. So, I'd love Donald's ideas. Of course, very concerned about the operation hours because those are people's homes that they're next to. At least the other ones not on top of people's homes. So, if there's a way to better do that. At least we did incorporate some of the stuff you guys said. So, that's a good part. We'll see what more we can incorporate into this that we can get done, understanding that whatever we put in place is going to take 25 to 35 to 45 years to build out. Now, I like the idea of the green wall, but now I'm concerned because my friend over here told me that the green wall might die. So, now I'm like, why would I want a green wall if the green wall's going to die? And it's, why would you do that after I had decided on a green wall? And then you're like, don't do the green wall. So, the other thing is, I'm concerned about, because I did, I knew when I had trucks and I was out in the middle of nowhere in Meridian, if you guys know where that is, you make a left by Ubusity and you go out to where no one lives and you put a town. And so, I ran the shipping out there. And we had to have fueling trucks because we didn't want the extra truck rides. And I'm scared that it's going to add to the truck rides. And so, I'm going to have to do, if this goes through, is a calculation on how many truck rides we're going to allow. And, you know, like, I don't want to do something that's going to double down, because I also can't enforce the truckers gassing up and making sure before they offload their load, because that's, there's no law to actually do that yet. And so, we need to really think how we're going to do that. And now I heard that you don't want speed bumps, and speed bumps was my only fight to protect that road, because if not, we'd have to use, do stuff to kind of bring the road in to slow people down like they did. But I really liked the speed bump idea, but now I'm scared I'm going to have trucks all night long, especially if this thing's open past midnight or 10 o'clock. Then speed bumps don't work. And now I just got to slow that dang thing down with some type of crosswalk or something like that. So, taking account every, all those things, because it's mostly on you, on the road conditions on that. And Darcy, that isn't on you, that you didn't know about the timing, because that's crazy.
Thank you, Garrett.
Well, I'm not done yet.
You sure?
Yeah. I'll keep, boy, let me get out my dictionary. I think we need some definitions read into the, and I think that's it. Now I'm done.
Siri. So, the first thing, of course, would be the hours of operation. This one, it was a given. And now that kind of brings to question, I mean, what else has been agreed on that, you know, we're going into this with some sort of confidence, thinking the applicant is meeting us in the middle. But, I mean, we have senior citizens, folks with health issues, introvert, who really, I mean, it takes a big leap of faith to come out and speak, parents terrified for their kids. I mean, I am terrified. So, we definitely need to see some, I mean, I know we've seen the applicant come up and meet us a lot, but this one where you're backtracking does not help. So, I'd also like to request the one thing that I'd asked the applicant to consider about the window panes and the air purifiers to bring that back. Also, more information on pair 4.3, pair 2, I'd like to see more about that. And, yeah, these are the kind of things that I would like to see when they do come back.
Thank you. David?
Adam, can you tell us something about that declaratory relief question? Is there a timing associated with that? I mean, do multiple sides get to argue in front of a judge? Is this a year-long process? Is it a week-long process? What is that?
Yeah, that's the kind of question I would prefer not to answer just on the fly. Generally, generally, what happens in these situations is they're litigated rather than they seek a declaratory relief action. The form of, the form of action is actually usually a writ proceeding. A declaratory relief is one of the kinds of things you can seek when you're, but there are procedural challenges and difficulties in succeeding in declaratory relief actions. We've, so, I can, I can put that in the next staff report if you'd like. I'm not, I'm not adverse to telling the community something about that at all.
There was a comment about pest abatement, staff. I think there was a comment was made, the traps on the border are not going to be adequate. What was actually intended with pest abatement?
The applicant stated he would agree to putting the rodent pest control traps along the property line to Baroque, which is the nearest the residences.
Is that best practice?
It's not something that, excuse me, that we as a city have required as a condition on projects in the past. So, I couldn't speak to whether or not that's the best practice.
Another Adam question. Air quality liability. By the way, the city has funded a network of air quality sensors that you can put in your own house, be part of the Purple Network. I think those are still available, Micah. We would order more if we ran out. I would encourage people to do that. I know there are already some in your neighborhood, but I would--
Air District's got even more too, though. Anybody that wants one, I'm sure.
The Air District's also doing--
I'm glad you brought that up.
Well, the Air District is where we get them. But, yeah, the--
I thought it was a private company, Purple Air.
Right. But Norman and I're suppliers coming from, we're buying them from the Air District.
I'm glad you brought that up, David, because there was, somebody said something about the nearest one being 10 miles away at the SMAT headquarters, and I knew that wasn't accurate because you worked to bring the Purple Air things here.
Yeah, there is a air quality management district network of sensors, as Donald just pointed out. We just don't happen to have one in Rancho Cudavah.
So, how does that differ from the Purple?
The Purple is, it's a very small device that you buy. I think it costs 250 bucks when I bought it myself. But the city agreed to buy them, distribute, then people basically plug them in at home, attach them to their Wi-Fi so they can constantly report 24/7 on air quality.
So, so long as you have power, yeah. There's one at my house, one of a few--
It's like a distributed citizen science kind of network of air quality. But it would be very good to establish a baseline before this project went forward. And then my question would be for Adam, is there air quality liability? And is the city assuming that for a project like this? Or is the applicant? Or is the business who operates the trucks? Who would have air quality liability?
Yeah, I'm, I am, I'm not aware of other successful air quality litigation being brought against cities for actions like this, but I'll be happy to add a paragraph or two on that topic to the next staff report.
The building level, staff, can you enlighten us at all about the level of the site? Is one building substantially higher than the other building? Are they proposing to level the entire site?
I don't have the grading plan in front of me, Councilmember Sander, to be able to verify that, but we can provide that information.
Can we require it? Take a look at it for the next time.
We'll take a look at it.
Thanks.
There was mention of an acoustical study that only looked at minns, not maxes. That doesn't seem to be an acoustical study to me.
We'll take a look at it to see if it's missing information.
I'm a little confused about the concept of living green wall. One interpretation, I think you were too, Donald, one interpretation of it's a bunch of trees with no structure of any kind in it, just densely planted trees, for example. That could be a living green wall, but that would not accomplish the sound attenuation that like a masonry wall that had vines growing over it would. That's another interpretation of what a green wall would be. A solid structure that would likely inhibit more sound covered in vines, that would inhibit even more sound if you had both, and it would be green. What was meant by green wall?
I believe that what was meant by the green wall initially, and I don't want to speak for the residents that brought it up at the community meeting, was to provide sort of the more decorative with the green vines and growth on it versus it being used for sound attenuation. But, again, I don't want to speak for what they actually--
I think doing, doing both is great, because then you get the benefit of the, of the growth, but you get the structure as well that inhibits sound. So, that would, that would be my preferred interpretation of what green wall was.
Can I add on to, at least to that question, whenever we get back to it? I'd be interested in understanding, because I think the applicant made a claim that visually you could have a bunch of trees making that same visual barrier against having the sound wall. My question would be, if all of the truck activity, or most of the truck activity, the backing up, the beeping, that kind of stuff, is going to be behind the building, what is, what is the effectiveness of a sound wall on the other side of that building if the barrier that's really holding in the sound is going to be the building? I don't know if I'm making sense when I say that. But if it's going to look better to not have the wall and the sound wall doesn't effectively reduce the sound, because the sound already has to go above 40 feet, it's not coming back down in the same way to affect an eight-foot wall that might be there. So, which one's the most effective? I don't know the answer to this. I'm asking the question that, can we get the answer of what that means? Because I think looking at a bunch of dense trees looks better than masonry wall, but if masonry wall holds in sound better, even when it's 100 feet from a 40-foot building, maybe we don't want it. I don't know.
Anything else?
Yeah, I assume that we have the ability to enforce trees once they're in landscaping, done many, many times. But in years past, people have gotten away with terrible things with regard to trees. You know, we required redwood planting, for example, to screen cars stacked up at recycling yards, and someone came along and decided to cut them all off at six feet tall. And, you know, the, under the old county code, it wasn't clear you could do any enforcement there. But we are in a position to do enforcement in a situation like that. And we have a city arborsum place to do it.
Albert is very good about that. One of our local gas station owners got fined multiple thousands of dollars for doing something stupid with their trees.
There was a question about the emergency access, and it would interrupt a screen that we had sort of designed there to keep truck, trucks and trailers from being seen from Ocelot. Is there a way to have emergency access that still has a movable gate that you can't see through? Like a large gate?
That would be a very large--
We could work with fire on what that potentially looks like. You're probably looking at some sort of a solid gate that they could roll open, which I think would be different than what was planned on the existing EVA.
Yeah. It would definitely be different than a typical EVA.
Yes.
And the final question was solar panels. I think this building, if I remember right in the reading, is being engineered for solar panels.
Yes.
And that's, that might even be a state law at this point.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, those are my questions.
Okay. So, obviously, the important one is the hours. And some additional information on other things, we need to ensure that all of the Attorney General's suggested conditions make their way to the list of conditions for this, just like they did to the, for the logistics center. Planting eucalyptus out there was a dorky idea, and it really needs to be a decent evergreen, evergreen tree, and there needs to be a healthy percentage of evergreen in strategic locations as opposed to deciduous. So, that the deciduous really add interest and color and that kind of thing, whereas the evergreens actually provide the screen. And I know that our arborsum can take care of that. Just for everyone's information, I'm looking at the civil site plan. Building A and B adjacent to Baroque are at 98 and 97 feet finished floor. Buildings D and C in the rear are only three to four feet in difference in elevation. 102 and 101 finished floor as opposed to the 98 and 97. So, it's just a slight rise, certainly not the, not to the top of the hill at the Fire Training Center or anything like that. So, so that will help. Training Center or anything like that, so, so that will help. And I think, Garrett, didn't you talk about, oh, you talked about earlier about not lighting the signs on the buildings? Yeah, not lighting the tenant signs. So that, that's a good one.
That was agreed to though, right?
Yeah, that's, that's a good one. So it sounds like the, well, aside from a couple of the other things like the windows and the air purifiers, the major sticking point is going to be that hours of operation, and so that's what we really need to push hard for.
Mayor Budge, could I also get concurrence on the potential relocation of the EVA? I know we talked about that they're, that they're amenable to doing that in SAC Metro Fire.
Yeah, I think we're, I think we're all, we're all in agreement with that one, especially, especially because Metro Fire needs to do something, you know, it really, it's a very significant curve all the way from Tintefina. I mean, just look at the, just look at the map, you know? It's, it's all the way from one end of Baroque to the other end of the Baroque. The entire thing is a curve. And so it's very difficult to find a location that you can come out and not be on a curve. And the one at, the one at Ocelot is compounded by the fact that you've got to access Ocelot, which is a residential street. And, you know, the, fortunately, it's, it's for emergency vehicles, but, but that's going to take some, some clever design work. And personally, having, having these trellises on countless numbers of commercial buildings, my, my preference would be for the trellises because the vegetation will grow better. If you try to grow something like creeping ivy, like you have all over SAC State, the first thing that happens is it grows into the cracks in the stucco and you get ivy inhabiting the walls of your building. Closest example of successful trellises around here is the UC Davis Med Center building at Cat Village. They did that well. So anything else, colleagues? We need a motion to continue to June the 5th, I think it is.
Motion to continue?
Yeah.
Second?
Okay, we have several seconds. Stacy, call the roll.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Aye.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Councilmember Pulapati?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sander?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Yes, thank you. Motion carries. Thank you all. I am extremely sympathetic with Sarah. We are all so tired of talking about warehouses. Seriously. We have no regular, regular agenda items, which brings us to requests for future agenda items. Anybody? Garrett? Siri? Okay. All right. Then with that, guys, we are adjourned. Thank you all. Good night. In memory of Cordova Joe.